Great.
Okay, you're all set to begin.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome everybody to the March eighteenth Barnstable Town Council meeting. It is seven o'clock on my clock and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, I must inquire whether anybody is recording this meeting, and if so, please make yourself known. And just to make a note that we are all remote. All the councils are remote during COVID, and without further ado, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilor is Atholus. Hogan.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Helm.
There.
Dag one. Raff Grissetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Neary. Snap.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Star.
Here.
Steinhopper.
Here.
We have four of them.
Excellent. I'd just like to make a note that Council Dag one has just arrived.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you. Okay.
Paul Neary is here as well.
There we go, Mr. Neary's there, I see him now. Thank you, Council Callum. Okay, so we have a special guest with us tonight. We have Eagle Scout Brennan Lowen with us, and he has agreed by my request to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we can all mute our microphones, all we can hear is Brennan's voice. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, thank you Brennan, appreciate that. And at this time, for a moment of silence, I would like to hand over the microphone to Council Raff Grissetti, which I recognize a very fascinating, a very special person at this time. Thank you, Council.
Thank you much, very much, President Levek. It is with a heavy heart that I remember my friend James Warren Gould, who passed away recently. And there's so much to say about Jim Gould, and I encourage everybody to please go to the Barnstable Patriot website, or, and I know it will be on the front page of tomorrow's paper, his obituary, which entails some, you know, a small portion of what Jim's life was all about. He was a professor, a pacifist, historian, author, a walker, a friend, and a mentor. And his, his life was full of so much. He was a professor at Scripps College and a Quaker, and he dedicated his life after teaching to history. And when he moved with his wife Anne, who they just celebrated their seventieth wedding anniversary, they moved to Katuut. He dove right into the local history, writing books on Katuut, Santuut, Hyannis, Marston's Mills. He contributed to the county history. He was a consummate historian, spending hours at the Registry of Deeds researching homes and how people lived, and he, he, he was amazing. I want to announce too, that the LAPC Land Acquisition and Preservation Commission, Committee, excuse me, plans on dedicating a planned walk during Trail's Weekend in early June at the Santuut Preserve, which Jim was instrumental in the acquisition of the Santuut Preserve, working with the town of Barnstable and Mashpee and the Commonwealth. So because of his endeavors, the, the community has quite a, a legacy in, in that conserved land. So please keep your, his family in your thoughts and prayers, and his legacy will live on, for sure. Thank you.
This time we like to have a moment of silence. Thank you, and thank you, Council Raff Grissetti, for that wonderful tribute. Okay, now it is time to recognize a very important young man who's done some great work for our community, and has accomplished some great things in his young life. At this point in time, I'd like to have Councilor Christine Clark take over the microphone at this point, thank you.
Thank you very much, President Levek. So this is through recognition of Brennan Lowen, who's just before Centerville, achieving the highest Eagle Scout connection of Eagles. This is the Barns, dated March eighteen, two twenty-one, the Barns, Town of Barns, but Town of Barns School Council congratulates Brennan Lowen, accomplishing the requirement of same Eagle Scout status in two fifty-four, ten. And was recognized along with thirty-three other equal status, two Eagle Scout classmates. On Thursday, this first ten, one of the last ten, had a virtual court of honor. Satisfying the experiment, but still felt things. Brennan led a project to build within the South Thirty-seven birdhouses around Hathaway House at Sandy Neck's Park. These birdhouses will host swallows, feed on green-headed flies and many other insects. It is hoped that these birdhouses will enhance the bird habitat, not only to betterment the ecosystem at Sandy Neck, but also for the public and businesses. The knowledge that only eight percent of both scouts go in this Eagle Scout ring. Appreciate Brennan's hard work, leadership, dedication to find, plan, complete the Eagle Project. We also thank the members of two fifty-four, other volunteers, who assisted bring this project to a long-lasting reality. Residents and vendors of Sandy Neck, happy beneficiaries. Brennan's good work and investment, which was grateful appreciation for that, that, Matthew Levek, Barns School Council. We thank.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Clark, and, and thank you Brennan. Brennan, congratulations, and thank you for your service to our community and, and helping, you know, you've, you've, you're helping so many visitors from Sandy Neck to enjoy Sandy Neck by, you're actually working towards removing greenheads. I mean, that's always the biggest, you know, no longer do we have to wait necessarily for where the wind is blowing, but we can, we can thank you for participating and creating those birdhouses, so those greenheads might not be as much of a nuisance, though. Anyway, really appreciate your participation, that congratulations, that is a rare accomplishment. And for a young man fully like yourself, I think if we found out, you're in good company here as well, Director Santos and Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, who are also Eagles out. So if I'm missing anybody else, I apologize, but they're great men, and I'm sure you'll be a great man as well and do great things. Did you have anything you wanted to say Brennan, not to put you on the spot, but I did want to give you an opportunity if you wanted to share anything?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We hope that's fair.
Our pleasure, so. What's that, I'm sorry, Council Clark?
You told it, you said pick the kid up.
Yes, very good, a nice, beautiful frame, thank you. Glad to be able to get into your hands before tonight, in the midst of Zoom, to make this, you know, as real as possible for you, you know? I should be very proud of your accomplishment. Any counselor wanted just anything on their minds they wanted to say real quick, or Council Callum?
Yes, Brennan, I just want to say congratulations, you know, it, it takes a lot, I think, in this day and age, especially for, for young people to, to reach a role of leadership, but you've done it. In, in like the less than, how old are you, fifteen maybe, younger, how old are you? Hmm? I can't hear you, maybe it's me, but anyway, I think it's amazing, eight percent of the kids I just heard that are in Boy Scouts actually become Eagle Scouts. These are skills you can use your entire life. The, the men that are, are with us tonight, Dan Santos and our, our Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, have had incredibly successful careers that they've built on a foundation of showing up and doing the right thing, perseverance, planning, hard work, missing Saturdays with your friends to do a project, those sorts of things. So this is the stuff that makes people great. So congratulations to you, congratulations to your parents. I'm sure a lot of it was them as well pushing you forward even when you didn't want to do it. But it's, it's all the stuff that, that makes people successful in life you have now, and you're light years ahead of a lot of people your age, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council Shaughnessy.
Brennan, I can only imagine how your parents feel. I've just met you tonight, and I am so incredibly proud of you, I really am. I wanted to say congratulations and wish you nothing but great things in your future. Thank you very much, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, and just because the council doesn't say anything doesn't mean we don't appreciate you. You know, we all appreciate what you're doing. We're all big fans, so, yeah, thank you, thank you for taking the time. Thank you, Mark and Karen, for being with us today. Congratulations as well, because we all know what it takes to be a parent and try to raise leaders in this community. It's not always the path, so thank you for going the extra mile, we should be very proud of what you've accomplished as well in Brennan, the place that he is now. So thank you very much for joining us, and thank you, Councilor Clark, again, round of applause. And thank you, Councilor Clark, for bringing this to me as well, and also, I believe, Council Star as well, and the work that you've been, been for Sandy Neck. So I look forward to maybe watching Trail's and trying to find those birdhouses, seeing them around. Thank you again, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
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 Right.
Great job.
Good stuff. Good things happening, civil rulings amidst COVID, so it's great, great that we can bring that recognition to the forefront of our community, so, excellent. Without further ado, Sarah, do we have anybody here that's for public comment, like to open a public comment, please? Thank you.
Next up for public comment, we have Betty Luckey, Betty, you have a minute.
Okay, here I go, I'm Betty Luckey, I'm here to talk about thirty-five scutter. And the subject I want to approach is due diligence, and that's on behalf of the town representatives, the town council, and the different boards. I think that in this thirty-five scutter project, we're putting way too much emphasis on housing, and we're not putting due diligence to some of the other factors that need to be considered. You are duly elected officials, and we give you our trust and our confidence that you're going to be stewards for all of us. There's over forty-four thousand residents of the town of Barnstable and thirty-five thousand voters. We put our trust in you to do what's right for all of us. And I want to speak to the twenty-eighteen Open Space and Recreation Plan in that, to say one of the reasons for doing that plan is to obtain state funding for open space and recreation, it's a great reason. You also said it was an emphasis to create a Hyannis Parks Plan, that's a priority set in that plan, I haven't seen that plan. You also touted the undevelopment, which I think is great, you talked about the gas station on Main Street, which abuts the thirty-five scutter, but you also said there's FIDO remediation going on for environmental protection there. I'd like to know what's underneath that park, needs to be remediated. You also talked about Stone's Antique Shop, and that you made that into a pocket park, I congratulate you on that. You then mentioned the survey you did as part of the plan, and again, there's forty-four thousand residents and thirty-five thousand voters. You had five hundred and seventy people respond to that survey, which I think is unsatisfactory. Of those, seventy-five percent of those who responded did not have children. So the data collected there is, is maybe somewhat suspect, even though it is the people, the five hundred and seventy did overwhelmingly say that open space is a priority for them. And now here's the real kicker, in ten years since the twenty-ten plan, you have acquired point one eight acres of parkland for Hyannis. Point one eight acres. That one eight acres is represented by Stone's Antiques. I knew Mr. Stone, he was a neighbor, he lived in Hyannis Port. It took the death of an individual and the end of his business for you to acquire point one eight acres of parkland for Hyannis. And what I'm seeing here, and why I talk about due diligence, is I think you owe it to us to broaden the scope of thirty-five scutter, it's an immense project, it's taking over forty acres of open land. The last open land, it's the golf course is like a lung, Stewart Street is like a kidney, cleaning our soils and our water. And we're just, we're just all on the housing bandwagon, I agree, we need housing, we need it badly. But your own housing plan says to cite the housing outside of Hyannis, that's your plan. So I ask, as, as trust, due diligence, you need to, anything that attaches to this project, the abutters need to be thirty-five thousand people, not just those, maybe a couple on Greenwood. Thirty-five thousand people need to be notified of every meeting that has to do with thirty-five scutter. So the entire town of Barnstable, those are all the voters in the town of Barnstable, have their say. Thank you very much for your time, and I applaud what you do, I couldn't do it. Again, I, you, you have a myriad of competing things to deal with, and I thank you so much. But I think due diligence is missing here on thirty-five scutter, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luckey, appreciate your time, to add to that, and really coming here and sharing with us, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Next for public comment, we have Brad Button, Brad, if you can unmute, you have a minute.
Good evening, can you hear me? My name is Brad Button, I live at thirty-five Blue Drive in Falmouth, Mass. I want to suggest to the town council tonight that coastal flooding caused by the combination of Hurricane Surge and rising sea level be considered in the review of the LMC development at thirty-five Scudder Avenue. These issues may become more problematic in the future, so a long-term perspective is prudent. And tonight, I'd like to provide you a bit of background on this issue, based on information online at the Massachusetts Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flooding Viewer, a product of Mass. CZM. The viewer shows the areas that could be inundated by Hurricane Surge and by rising sea level on a separate map. The maps, which I think council has received today, shows the surge levels for category one to four hurricanes, and the star indicates the location of the proposed LMC development. The buildings proposed by LMC at about twenty feet elevation are not flooded under the current predictions caused by hurricanes alone. However, a surge projected for Cat Three and Cat Four hurricanes would block Scudder Avenue and the proposed entrance to the apartment, the area circled in red. Flooding of portions of North Street and Main Street circled in blue is predicted for Cat Four hurricane, possibly blocking direct access from the Hyannis Fire Station. Changes in sea level must be added to the Hurricane Surge prediction. The Unicameral Panel on Climate Change predicts sea level to rise by about three feet by twenty-one hundred, and NOAA suggests an increase of as much as eight feet as possible by twenty-one hundred. If sea level was eight feet higher than present, the flooding pattern predicted for Cat Four hurricane might instead be caused by a weaker hurricane, and flooding associated with a Cat Three or Cat Four hurricane might reach the apartment building. Twenty-one hundred may seem like a long time away, but the LMC project likely has a long life expectancy, so consideration of future conditions is prudent before developing this coastal parcel. The surge associated with a hurricane depends on many factors, and the flooding viewer only shows that such flooding is possible. It does not show the likelihood of these events. Hurricanes, especially a Cat Three or Cat Four, are thankfully rare, and it would take a storm with particular characteristics to produce these flooding patterns. For context, the hurricane of thirty-eight in Carolyn fifty-four were Cat Three storms. Hurricane Edna Bob and Sandy were Cat Two storms. It's important to note that recently, the rate of sea level rise has accelerated, and research suggests hurricanes are becoming more intense. In summary, flooding of the access road to the LMC development is possible under catastrophic hurricanes. Flooding of access and possibly of the site itself would be more likely toward the end of the century because of rising sea level and the possibility of more hurricane. And I urge you to look at these maps, can be found online by Googling Massachusetts Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flooding Viewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Button, appreciate your time, sharing that with us.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else, please?
Yes, I'm just waiting for them to join us.
Thank you. I, I would ask, to take this time, if anybody else is lucky, Mr. Button, if, if you could just exit and maybe watch on the website, just so the Zoom room doesn't get too congested, we really appreciate that. Again, thank you for your time. Ms. Mort, welcome. You have three minutes.
Right, I, um, I just wanted to, sorry.
No, that's okay, all set, somebody unmuted themselves, now they're muted, you go ahead.
Um, thank you for.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
I just hear someone else.
If you have a device on, you probably want to mute that, because we have, we do have a delay, so you might be hearing that.
All right, um, okay, well, thank you, this is a little bit weird, trying to figure it all out.
Well, our world.
So I just wanted to draw some attention, I know that there have been a couple meetings. I'm hearing my own delay, that's so bizarre.
Right. If you're watching it somewhere else, or you're on Channel eighteen or the website, just shut that off, that'll help you.
Ah, that was me, that was my bad, okay, sorry.
Still have all that time, so go ahead.
Okay, um, so I know there have been some meetings about the accessory dwelling unit changes that are, that have gone on with the CBA, and I just wanted to highlight some things that have been floating around with people looking for housing. And some of those comments are before, a one-bedroom, you're looking at eighteen hundred to two thousand to start, you find something, let's grab it. Expect a bunch of other applicants as well. Hate to say it, but if you have twenty applicants, they're probably going to skip over you if you have a dog. Then there's, someone else commented, look in onset, where Hamborn, South Plymouth on the ponds. You may just have to cross the bridge. It's very difficult to find rentals, you might be able to find a one-bedroom for around fourteen hundred plus facilities. Some people are a little less in delicate about the situation. The bear of bad news, but when I moved back from Mass, we couldn't find a place, and we had to go back over the bridge. It caught us falling apart, why would you even want to move here, rent prices and food prices are up off the chart. People that have lived here all their lives are leaving because they can't afford to live here anymore. And that's just on one post. We're, our lease is up July first, and I know this is something that I've been kind of insufferably talking about nonstop. But we are probably facing a rental raise July first, and if that happens, we'll more than likely be pushed off tape. We can't afford a first-class insurance security and save and take care of utilities and all the other bills with the rental prices that are going on right now. So I guess the end point of this is, I just hope that the counselors will support ADU bylaw changes, especially the year-round renter part of those changes that have been discussed, because it's a business, it's just getting worse, and one-bedrooms for less than eighteen hundred are starting to become hard to find. So that's all I had at the moment, and I look forward to working more with you folks.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mort, and also too, another shout out to while we have you, thank you for participating in our committees, and Human Services up for a first read today, really big involvement, not only a public comment, but really pleased, well, thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Well, have a great night.
You too.
Sarah, anybody else?
Yep, next for public comment is Cassie Gibson, Cass, go ahead and mute yourself, you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone, thank you very much for having me. I'm sorry, I can't seem to get my video to work, but I am a resident of the town of Hyannis, and I also work in Hyannis, I am a longtime Cape Cod or Washashore. I am currently renting, love my home, I do aspire to buy someday. And I do believe that the accessory dwelling bylaw change could help me be able to do that. At this point, with the raising cost of properties on the Cape, owning a home is unreachable for me. Even though I do make a pretty sizable amount of money, it's just they're so far away from what is affordable for me to live. I am fortunate that I have not, at this point, had a rent increase and increase, and I hope that I don't anytime soon, but I would anticipate at some point I'm going to have to live somewhere else. I'm, I don't anticipate my landlord will keep the house forever. I'd love to be able to buy it, but it's just not within my ability to do so. And I really think that the accessory dwelling bylaw change could help open up a lot of opportunities for a lot of people in similar situations to me, and people in much worse situations to me. I know that I have had, my children have very, very difficult times trying to find a place. Fortunately, eventually they did, but you know, everything is tentative, and everything is is at risk of being lost with the constant increases that are happening here on the Cape. And the more inventory there is, the lower the prices will be, and the more affordable it will be for people. You know, we're in a catch twenty-two. The less rentals there are, the more hard they are to come by, the higher the prices are going to be, and you get into the, the wars with trying to get a place. Just, people are leaving Cape Cod because they cannot afford to live here, and I certainly don't want to be one of them. So I thank you very much for your time, and thank you for listening, and I hope you'll consider these bylaw changes. I do think that the less restrictions on the homeowner, the better, but I do think there does need to be some kind of year-round component for at least one of the unit in order to add to the year-round inventory. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, for your input, again, I always appreciate people's time, so, and know that you are listening.
Thank you.
Next for public comment, we have Susan Morabach, she has three minutes.
Welcome, Susan.
Sorry, I am Sue Morabach from Centerville, and I'm here on behalf of myself and three other women, Erin Andrews of Centerville, Robin Camp and Anderson of Katuut, and Tara Vargas Wallace of Hyannis, to thank you for putting the proclamation for inter, the Women's History Month on your agenda, and I hope that you all will support it, and that it will be read later in the meeting. It's the fortieth anniversary of Women's History Month. Women's International, International Women's Day, however, which we just celebrated, date from the early nineteen hundreds. There are so many women that have had an important part in history, in women's history, in American history, and also so many women who are making history right now, that have not been recognized, and this, this month is a wonderful opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you're going to tune in, just so you know, anybody watching, regards to that proclamation we did, I'm going to take that item out of the order and move it up into the agenda.
Oh, great, I'll stay, thank you.
Yeah. It's still going to be after our presentation, but I did put it as a question. Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, thanks to Paula Schnapp for doing the work to get it on the agenda.
Next up for public comment is Karen McGuire.
Hi there.
Hi, Ms. McGuire.
Hi, good to see you. My name is Karen McGuire, I live at two thirty-four Greenwood Ave. And I want to share with you tonight some of the town history regarding the restoration of Stewart's Creek Estuary. And ask that you keep this information in mind and keep an open mind as you move through the approval processes for the proposed apartment development complex at thirty-five Scudder Ave, the Twinbrook Golf Course. We, the Scudder Ave neighbors, thirty-five Scudder Ave neighbors, ask that you, Barnstable Town Council members and others on this call, to listen to our concerns and make wise and well-informed decisions as you move forward regarding the approval of the proposed LMC apartment development complex. So let me give you a little bit of conservation history on this property. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers characterizes Stewart's Creek in these words. Stewart's Creek is a valuable ecological resource that is utilized by the public for recreational fishing, bird watching, canoeing, kayaking, and hiking. The aesthetic coastal scenery of Cape Cod not only benefits residents of the coastal communities, but also attracts tourists from around the world. So as early as nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and two, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers began collecting data and analyzing conditions of the creek that they used in their two thousand and six report. So during a ten-year period of time between two thousand and six and two thousand and sixteen, the town of Barnstable worked together to restore Stewart's Creek watershed to its natural environment. A lot of us worked really hard to do the right thing and restore the creek. The town partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Woods Hole Group, neighbors, and others to improve the creek. Restoration costs exceeded one million dollars, over four hundred thousand dollars, which came from the town. Stewart's Creek abutters were required to connect the town sewer, had a considerable long-term cost to each homeowner as well as the town. Former town counselor James Crocker stated in a meeting addressing Stewart's Creek that if we really wanted to restore Stewart's Creek watershed, we should restore the creek all the way up to the Twinbrook Golf Course and the two bordering creeks. The brackish water of Stewart's Creek Estuary harbors unique plant and animal species that rely on the estuary for sources for food, nesting, and breeding sites, including the site at thirty-five Scudder. So we ask you, as the town council, to weigh, hold on. We ask you to weigh the development of a dense apartment complex in this location with historical work that has been done in the past, restore Stewart's Creek when you make your decision going forward about thirty-five Scudder. The environment challenges that will develop should you go forward with the complex at this site will be considerable. And we ask you to consider another location for this necessary, for the necessary housing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire, appreciate your time.
Next for public comment, we have Carrie, if you can mute, you have three minutes.
Hello.
Hi, Tina.
Hi, I have a couple of questions about the searing. If you want to hook up to a alternative system like Nitrek, who I have contacted on the phone, do you still have to pay a town charge and can you opt out of the town sewer? Because it's actually cheaper for me to go with this Nitrek company. And they actually reduce the nitrogen load down to two point seven, where the best the town can do is three milligrams per liter. So it's actually lower than what the town's offering with the searing. The other thing is, if you have a betterment on your property from this sewer thing, can a new buyer assume the payments that are still remaining under the same terms and conditions if you sell your property? Or does the balance need to be paid off at the closing? And I read the wastewater plan, which was what, a very long thing? And it says that as time goes on, that it'll start out at an average of eighteen thousand and it would increase up to thirty-one thousand nine sixty-five by the year thirty of the program. So every year that people hook up, the cost is actually going up every year. And if it takes you five years to get to us, we could be paying, you know, twenty-five thousand, not eighteen thousand. Is there any way of capping this for the people that? I mean, there's got to be some kind of plan where you can cap it each year. Otherwise, if it takes you twenty years to get to me, I could be, you know, paying an assessment because you're now charging a hookup fee for ADUs. And is that also going to be eighteen thousand, the ADU cost? So it's basically doubling it. So I don't know if you can answer these questions. Oh, and are unbuildable lots charged any sewer fees for the sewer running by an unbuildable lot? Do they still have to pay a sewer fee if it's not buildable? Oh, the other thing is if I have a budding neighbors, there's a little street called Cottage Lane that has four houses on it. If I had a shared Nitrek system, could I invite my neighbors to also join that? Because we are on the pond and of course, we want to keep the nitrogen levels as low as possible. And that was my other question is, has anyone ever done a water nitrogen test or phosphate on long pond? Because I can't seem to find any data on any testing being done in any of the ponds. So the ponds could be loaded with nitrogen too. And it's very strange that since Stewart's Creek has hooked up to searing.
Ms. Carrie, could you please wrap up your comments, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said it's just very strange that Stewart's Creek nitrogen levels have increased since they went on town sewer. That's also something I hope people look into. Thank you so much, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Carrie. And I would just like to take this time, I had mentioned it before, if anybody was tweeting earlier for public comment, just so we can keep the room small as possible. If those who already made their public comment, tune in either on the website or Channel 18 to watch the rest of the meeting and also watch, obviously, our response to public comment. That would be helpful if you possibly could, thank you.
Next for public comment is Jim Hutchins, Jim, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. This is Jim Hutchins. I've been around Cape Cod for about thirty years now, and I'm a permanent residence in Barnstable County. Now, I'm not as far along as many of our speakers. I only heard about this project. Can you hear me?
Again, yes, sir.
You know, I only heard about this project, the thirty-five Scudder, with about the last two weeks. And I was really rather surprised. You know, if I understand correctly, the LMC has already received a preliminary approval. And you know, this is to build what I believe is one of the largest, if not the largest, ever housing development on Cape Cod. You know, I've owned apartment buildings, I've owned two family houses. And when I look at the three hundred and twelve apartments that correspond to six hundred and fifty people, you know, I would just mention, this could easily turn into seven hundred and fifty people, if not more. I'm very concerned about the proposed, you know, four hundred and sixty-eight, maybe five hundred cars. You know, this could easily be seven hundred to eight hundred cars. And don't forget, people who would live in this facility would have visitors. Now, let's just look at summer or the off-season, the summer month. You could have a thousand cars over at that complex. I think we can all imagine what the West End Rotary might be like with an added five, six, seven hundred cars. I mean, particularly in six months of the year. So I just want to mention that there's more issues going on here than just trying to create some house. The last thing I'll say is about the environment. You know, this property of Buttes, I've already heard and you've already heard, this vulnerable fourteen acres of Stewart Creek and Joshua Creek and various wetlands. This area is partially a flood zone. That's a potential real problem as we go forward here. The developer's going to be cutting down trees on the golf course, filling in three ponds. This is really not a good idea because we have all of this concrete board. The message is, Hyannis needs more open space, not more development. Now, there's two topics that I simply don't understand, so I want to share them with you. And that is, why has the town approved the development permitting? You know, that I think puts, many people think puts this area at risk. We don't need to talk about water in Cape Cod, but there's no secret that this water situation article recently in the paper is a real problem. And lastly, most people, you know, this property was zoned as single-family houses, not as a massive development. And there was a comment about, you know, lower rent. It is my understanding that this is a typical poor-rent apartment building in this state who have to set aside ten percent, which would be thirty-one units for low-income housing. I don't want people to be thinking that this is going to be some more advantageous price-rise facility.
Mr. Hutchins, can you please wrap up your comments?
This land needs to be protected, and I just want to share my comment. I appreciate the council giving me the time to speak, thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing with us, Mr. Hutchins, have a great night.
Thank you.
Sarah, anybody else for public comment? Okay. Now it is time for council response and public comment. Who would like to go first? Councilor Attolus, we're going after about a quarter.
It's not so much a comment, more of a question to any staff available to answer some of the comments made about the thirty-five Scudder project and that about approvals and I think the common town approved. I just think we need to clarify for the audience where this project stands. I know Elizabeth has done it before in previous meetings. I think it's important to do it again because I think there's a, there could be some misconceptions about how far along this actually is. And I just wanted to see if Elizabeth or someone could address that for the public. Thank you.
And just for clarification, this is in regards to thirty-five Scudder, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Director Jenkins, would you like to comment on that? Where, I guess where is the, I guess the question is, where are we in that process at the town?
Again, only because, excuse me, Mr. President, only because folks have heard, obviously not just tonight, but just on the street, so to speak, that things have been approved, it's moving along, it's going to happen. You know, there's, and we know it's not the case, but I just think it's best to hear from the folks who are best, you know, qualified to speak about it.
Great point, thank you, Councilor Attolus. Director Jenkins.
You're on mute.
No.
Microphone?
Yeah, actually, she's not.
No?
Now you can hear me.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can hear me okay now? I don't know what happened there. Good evening, councilors, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Thank you, Councilor Attolus, for the opportunity to address the public on this development review project. The status of the project as it currently stands is they had a hearing at the Cape Cod Commission relative to the process through with. This project will go through development review at the Cape Cod Commission. So the full Cape Cod Commission at this point has granted LMC permission to pursue permitting through the Cape Cod Commission of the project as a development agreement as opposed to pursuing the, as opposed to pursuing the development of regional impact process. The commission ultimately supported this because they felt that it allowed them more flexibility to be able to negotiate with the developer to, around a project that was the most responsive to residents' concerns. So that has been the only approval that has been granted, not a development approval, but a process approval. The next step in the process would be for the developer to submit an application for the project to the Cape Cod Commission, so not to the town, but to the regional planning agency, the Cape Cod Commission. They would proceed through that review process. And that's where you get a lot of information about the project. So you won't have to imagine or guess the traffic impact, the environmental impact. You know, they'll be required as part of their development review process to provide information on the impact of the development. And the Cape Cod Commission will be able to sort of negotiate and weigh their concerns around that information. So again, should the Cape Cod Commission choose to approve a development agreement with the developer, at that point, the town would take jurisdiction of the project. And the developer has indicated that he would, that they would pursue a regulatory agreement with the town as that property is in our regulatory agreement district. And they would need approvals under local zoning to pursue that project here with the town. So that local process would include review by both the planning board and the town council. As we've spoken to before, the planning staff here in Barnstable has committed to providing regular updates, even though the project's not within our jurisdiction now. It's obviously a project that has significant public interest to the Greater Hyannis Civic Association, as well as up on our website, so folks can follow along. And we will continue to commit to do that as the process progresses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Call.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. I just wanted to ask a couple more things that I think are prudent for the people to know. What is the appropriate time for citizens to speak to their concerns about the project at the Cape Cod Commission? And is there a timeline that we have that could help them? As far, I know you've been really good about giving notices to pertinent things that are happening with that. And I know we've had a couple FaceTime calls now with the Greater Hyannis Civic Association to answer some citizen questions and constituent concerns. But what is, when is the appropriate time for people to speak to Cape Cod Commission if they have concerns?
So again, once the development review application is filed, there'll be an initial technical review process by staff. And then that application will proceed to public hearings, probably on the committee level and then to the full commission. And there will be opportunity for public comment to the Cape Cod Commission initially at those hearings. So if folks are, again, interested in learning more about the project, you know, providing testimony in response to the development application, I would first direct them to the Cape Cod Commission. Again, that's where the initial project review for this development will occur.
And is that a publicly, that's a publicly noticed process, I'm sure? And people would find notice of that application on the Cape Cod Commission website?
Correct, I would, I would look at the Cape Cod Commission meeting notice website, as well as their calendar. And of course, I guess those are posted agendas and meeting notes. But again, we know those can be hard to miss sometimes, so we're happy to help push those out to the GHCA and others as they come up.
So if I could ask, maybe it would be appropriate, since we had some concerns from, you know, other Barnstable residents besides just my constituents in Precinct thirteen, maybe we could forward those notices to all civic associations if possible? Or, you know, councilors in general, so we could put them in touch with people that are concerned and want a chance to speak to the project. I know that Karen McGuire has done an unbelievable job in getting people together and listening to their concerns. And everyone had questions to ask at the last FaceTime, or sorry, Zoom meeting that we had with the developer. And it was very civil and honest and forthright. And it was real citizen engagement, it was actually very inspiring. So I would like to keep that rolling, just so they all feel that they had a chance to speak to the process and be a real part of it, because it's a big development and it affects a lot of people. And so I would ask that, if you could do that, that would be. Um, and so I would ask that if you could do that, that would be amazing. I would really appreciate that.
We'd be happy to help spread the word of, of those notices to those participants.
Thank you very much. And then if I could just ask, um, through, uh, our Assistant Town Manager and through you, um, President Levesque, if you don't mind, if, if maybe, um, Director Santos could speak to the nitrogen loading comment about Stewart's Creek post and pre sewer, I would appreciate that. I just think, I'm not being argumentative. I just think it's important that we all start with the same set of facts in order to get where we need to go on this project and others.
Excellent. Correct information is key. Um, first I, so Assistant Town Manager Andy Fivern.
Mr. President, if I might, um, before we turn over to Dan Santos, I, I was going to ask that, that, uh, Ms. Carey actually sent those very thoughtful questions. Um, I appreciate Keena Carey's questions. Um, they're across the, they, they're not simple answers and they cross the department. And I would, so that we provide thoughtful answers. There's some Director Milne, uh, response there. There's some Dan Santos. I know Councilor Callen just mentioned in the mic here for Dan on the nitrogen loading question. But I'd appreciate if he would mind getting us those questions because I think it's important for everyone in the community to hear the answer. They should be thoughtful.
Yes. Thank you. Great point. Council Dagew, when you had your hand up, there you are.
Um, yes, I wanted to ask, um, um, Elizabeth, what's the timeframe for the Cape Cod Commission to do this, uh, developmental review?
So, uh, again, at this point, the applicant has yet to file a development review application with the Cape Cod Commission. So, um, I think when that happens, we'll be able to work with the commission to, uh, lay out that timeframe. Um, that, you know, there, uh, I, it, it's not uncommon for development reviews of this scope to be protracted. Um, so I, my guess is that, you know, it, it, it will proceed as, as, um, you know, in accordance with the, the, you know, Cape Cod Commission's review process and as information, um, is submitted by the developer at the request of the commission. So again, without a development application filed, a little bit hard to predict iteration of that review process at this juncture.
For you, Mr. President, um, Elizabeth, um, is it possible that they're withdrawing the, you know, their proposal because they've not committed anything yet?
Uh, I am not, I'm not aware of, of any intention to withdraw the proposal at this point.
Thank you, Councilor Dagewan. Uh, Vice President Sheppes.
Thank you, President Levesque, and I wanted to thank all of those who came out tonight for public comment. Uh, it, it really shows the diversity and complexity of the issues that we face in trying to provide housing, keep our environment, uh, clean and safe, um, and, you know, work together as a community. Uh, but I did want to, you know, definitely, uh, highlight that, that in, in addition to sometimes looking at housing developments that give a lot of units, which, you know, uh, obviously creates some issues. I think bringing back the accessory dwelling unit, um, to, for our conversation, uh, probably as early as April is, I think, very important for us to move forward on. So I am glad that we had some public comment related to that. And I'm not sure that Councilor Callen's question was answered. She was, uh, had directed something for, uh, for Mr. Santos to answer about the effluent, uh, change in Stewart's Creek since it's in the sewers. So I didn't know if he had an opportunity to, to address that.
Director Santos, would you like to address that?
Uh, certainly. There, there's a number of issues there relative to nitrogen. Um, so Stewart's Creek, that project, um, was intended to work over a number of years. And it would be a, a solid decade before we started to see some real, real improvements, although we have seen some, uh, already. And so we are doing monitoring. And, uh, I don't have the exact numbers for the nitrogen, you know, pre and post right now. But I wouldn't be surprised if they were higher now because all those homes that were sewered, and not all of them have been today, there are still a number that are not connected to sewer, there's still on septic systems. Uh, it takes time for that, um, material to move through the groundwater and then into the, uh, into the Stewart's Creek, uh, system. So, uh, I do expect that that will go down, uh, and we will continue to monitor that. Relative to the question about the alternative septic systems, right now, the D E P approves alternative septic systems uh, for nitrogen reduction. The best they can do right now is nineteen milligrams per liter of nitrogen in the effluent, which is far different than was suggested by Ms. Carey. There may, there are other systems that may be being tested that do better, but they're not approved to be used in communities. Um, and, uh, regardless of what our treatment plant puts out, which when we do modify it, will be in the two to three milligrams per liter range. The, the real meat of the matter is that we're, we're going down to zero in the neighborhood where we're removed, where we're connecting sewer. So if we take the wastewater out of there, there's zero. Um, and in many of these watersheds, the neighborhoods in Barnstable, we need to take a hundred percent of the nitrogen out. So even if it is two or three or five or 10, it's still going to be a problem. And we still need sewer to completely remove, um, remove the nitrogen. Um, a couple of other issues there, uh, relative to, uh, you know, connection, there's some policy decisions there whether non-buildable lots in Stewart's Creek, non-buildable lots were not assessed, um, a sewer connection because they were never going to have a sewer connect. Um, you know, that, that remains to be seen, uh, but that's what we did there. And I think, uh, the other issues might be for Mark Milne or others. But, uh, specific to the nitrogen issues, I think that, that responds to some of the issues that were raised.
Thank you, Director Santos, for addressing those questions. And, um, again, you know, just to reiterate what, uh, the Town Manager Andy Fivern had mentioned. Ms. Carey, if you are listening, please forward those questions that you have. Make sure that all those questions, we've had it. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other, uh, Councilor Rappi City, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would also direct, uh, Ms. Carey to, uh, participate in Thursday, March twenty-fifth sewer assessment discussion, where she can ask questions, um, and, uh, receive some feedback or at least get into the, the discussion regarding the sewer assessment. Um, and also with regard to the, um, thirty-five Scudder Avenue, the Cape Cod Commission already has received, um, numerous public comments regarding the project. They can be viewed right on the website of the Cape Cod Commission, um, and as well as traffic study. Um, I know a traffic study was done for that area when the Symphony was looking to, uh, locate there. That's on the website. But, uh, I also see that their March twenty-fifth meeting has been canceled. So, um, at least for this month, I don't think you have to worry about, uh, attending a, a meeting regarding thirty-five Scudder Avenue. Also with, with, uh, to Ms. Gibson's comment about, um, not being able to find a, a place to purchase. And I, I hear, uh, her concerns because so many people are struggling to find housing. Um, I, I look forward to the discussion on ADUs, but know too that ADUs does not necessarily mean that you'll be able to purchase a house. You'll perhaps be able to rent a house, but, uh, certainly you won't be able to rent that house short term. If I have anything to say about that, uh, th- those regulations. So, um, it would be a, a year, year-round rental, um, in, in my book, but, uh, so more on that, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rappi City. Councilor Park, please.
Very much, President Levesque. Um, I appreciate, uh, the Callen's remarks over the, uh, Scudder Lane, Scudder Ave project. Um, but being a resident in the western part of town, I have not been privy to the information that the Greater Hyannis Civic Association has had. So, uh, do they have a website or a, a Zoom link that, so others could chime in or become a member to get?
They do. And, and you know what I'll do is I'll forward all counselors' information along to Deb Crowe. And maybe when she sends out her, uh, her newsletters, we could all be a part of it. So you guys could be a part of what's going on in Hyannis. Good idea.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Callen. Any further comment, Councilor Clark?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate Councilor Callen's, um, offer. I'm also mindful that, that the, the general public might be interested in this. So I guess, um, that, that, as we go work through the, um, planning and development, um, or update on when their presentation may be.
Any, anyone, doesn't matter if you're a resident of Barnstable or not, can sign up, I believe, for the newsletter on the website, um, for the Greater Hyannis Civic Association. I was just extending personal courtesy for the, the counselors on the board. But anyone can, can be, anyone can be a member. I'm sure they wouldn't turn you away, um, if you want to pay the membership fee. Um, but it's, uh, if you can sign up relatively easily on the website.
Councilor Bogdan, you had your hand up earlier.
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. Although I must say that, uh, Councilor Rappi City stole my thunder a little bit. First of all, with regard to the comments of Ms. Gibson and Megan Mort, I, I, I thank you for sharing your, 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 your life. Um, your, your pain and your passion is evident. Um, and as Councilor Rappi City said, you know, we will do what we can to, uh, ensure that ADUs, uh, are stepped forward in addressing your concerns and, and promoting housing availability. Uh, I'll also, uh, acknowledge, as the President did, this is the second time we got that pleasure of, uh, uh, having Ms. Mort appear before me as a member of the Appointments Committee. Uh, she was, uh, before us two days ago and made a, a commendable presentation at that time. Always a pleasure to see her. Uh, finally, with regard to, uh, Ms. Warbach's support for the Women's History Month Initiative that will be coming before us later. Um, uh, too long in coming is what I will say. Um, as someone who was raised by a single mother, I, I have said unequivocally, I wouldn't be who I am. I wouldn't be where I am were it not for my mother. Um, and so for too long, we have failed to recognize the, the contributions that women have in our society, not just on this council, but in day-to-day life, uh, raising children, working, trying to do both, particularly as last year has shown, um, it's been incredibly difficult. Uh, so I applaud the sponsors for bringing that measure before this council. Uh, and note that it's, uh, with great pride that I announced that we even have one, uh, who serves as Vice President in this country and she happens to be a person of color. So thank you to the sponsors of, of that initiative. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Bogdan. Well said. Any other council comments? Excellent. Okay, so that would wrap up Councilor Response, public comment. And, uh, we will move on to Assistant Town Manager Andy Fivern, filling in this evening for Town Manager Communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Town Counselors. Andy Fivern, Assistant Town Manager. I'll be delivering the Town Manager update for period March second through March eighth. We're going to start off with Katie Service, our Airport Manager for newly rebranded Cape Cod Gateway Airport. Going to give you a, a update on the Airport Master Plan.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate it. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, good evening, President Levesque, Vice President Snap. Counselors, thank you for having me here. As Andy said, I'm Katie Service, the Airport Manager for Cape Cod Gateway Airport. So with me tonight is Rick Lucas. Rick is the Project Manager for, um, McCarlin Johnson, who are our on-call planners and also the Project Manager for the Airport Master Plan. So together tonight, Rick and I are going to be providing you with an update. Last time we met with you, it was back in October. And so we've, uh, progressed, um, along quite nicely with the master plan. So we're here to give you an update. And Rick, if you wouldn't mind saying hello and sharing your PowerPoint.
Hello. Nice to be here with you all tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and share the PowerPoint. Let me know if everyone can see that.
Think you might need to bring it into the presentation. There you go.
There you go. Looks great.
Great. Rick, if you wouldn't mind just advancing to, I think it's slide three. Thanks. So back in October, we gave you, um, a brief overview of where we were in, in the master plan. So before I hand the presentation over to Rick, I just want to kind of catch you up to speed as to where we are. And then we'll get into the particulars of, of the master plan. And then if you have any questions, um, towards the end of the presentation, we're open for questions. So just real briefly, um, I'll go over the master plan goals, the process that we're going through for, for the master plan. Again, where we are in the schedule and then our public participation and how we're getting public feedback in regards to the master plan and how we're proceeding forward. And Rick will go over the inventory, which highlights what do we have here today at the airport, very brief overview. Um, the forecasts of future demand, so what we anticipate seeing at the airport in the future. Uh, what are the facility requirements that would meet those demands? And then the alternative design options that we've looked at, that is exactly where we are in the master plan right now, the alternative, and what we have come up with to meet those facility requirements. And then I'll go over next up to you. So Rick, next slide. So just to kind of bring you back to, um, the master plan. Um, basically, the master plan goals took into account Town of Barnstable goals, the strategic plan. It took into account the airport business plan goals. And it took into account what we need to, um, do to our facility to meet both Mass Air and Autics Regulations and Federal Aviation Administration Goals and Regulations. Um, in terms of what do we need to do to our facility to make sure that we're meeting the standard that's required by us? Next slide. Um, where are we? So the very first block that you see at the top of that screen, inventory, forecast and environmental overview. So prior to getting into that piece of the master plan process, we held stakeholder listening sessions in fact. Um, we met with President Levesque and, and former, uh, John Flores, who is actually now on the Airport Commission. Met with them, spoke to them about, you know, what, what are we looking, um, for the airport in the future? We also met with a number of businesses surrounding the area, some of our community members, and then our existing tenants. We also held our first project advisory group meeting, which is made up of a, a number of different entities, including leadership from the Town of Barnstable, as well as Cape Cod Commission, um, some of our local civic associations, um, and some of our other businesses that surround the airport. So we looked at, again, what we had at the airport, what we forecast that we will have to accommodate in the future. And then an understanding of our environment that surrounds us so that when we started to look at our facility requirements and when we started to look at alternatives, we understood what those potential impacts. So we completed facility requirements back in about the October timeframe. We had our second project advisory group meeting plus some internal meetings with FAA, the state and Cape Cod Commission. And then we said, we have enough information here to now open the doors to the public to say, okay, this is what we found at the airport, here's what we have today, here's what we need in the future. And then, by the way, we need your input because we're going to step into the alternative. What can we do at the airport to meet our facility requirement? So that's where we are really right now is alternative. Um, the public will have the opportunity to not only respond to any of the comments that they may have to date of the documents that we've provided, but they will be have time to also respond during the environmental review process, which happens after the master plan. So next slide, Rick. So really where we are right now, March twenty-twenty-one, alternative analysis, the gray shaded task identify where we've been, what we have accomplished. We, um, started our virtual public meetings back in October. And we are coming upon our next public meeting, which is actually, uh, this Monday, the twenty-second at six P M. Um, and I'll go over that in a couple of minutes. Next slide. So, our previous approach, typically in a master plan world without COVID-19, we're having open house. We're inviting the public to come in, they have an opportunity to meet with the project team. They have the ability to listen to a presentation that we'll have set up. Plus, we typically set up stations that have identified areas of concern that the community may have, whether it be the runway extension that we're looking at, or environmental concerns. We typically have an open house with direct, so that people have an opportunity to go directly to the area of concern that they have with any plan that we're looking at. COVID-19, we weren't able to have that. So, when we started our initial public participation back in October, the best that we could do was open up it to a virtual review. So, we ended up pulling together all of the presentations about the inventory, the forecasts, the facility requirements, and we created a voiceover presentation and put it on our YouTube page. We shared that with the public. We provided public link to our master plan website. We asked for commentary to come into a designated email that they could respond to us and receive comments, which we have received many to date. We put out legal notices and press releases. We sent out postcards. I've interviewed on two radio stations to make sure that the public knew we wanted their feedback. So, to date, we have received a lot of information from the public. To date, and we're keeping track of those, we have frequently asked questions that we've posted on our website, so that for those questions that are being asked, anybody from the public can take a look at that. They can see what the commentary is and how we've responded. The virtual public meeting that we will have is very much like what we're doing tonight with Town Council. It will be held on March 22nd at 6:00 PM. We also have Sarah Beal, who is helping us out by putting this live on Channel 18. So there's going to be plenty of opportunity for the public to take a look at what we're planning for the future of the airport. Next slide, Rick. And I think with that, I'm going to hold off. Rick's going to take over the presentation, and then I will close out the presentation and then ask for any questions or comments. Go ahead, Rick.
All right, thanks, Katie. And just so everyone's aware, this is actually pretty close to the same exact presentation we're looking to use for Monday's meeting with public. And I will tell you, as someone who is the keeper of that email address with comments, we have read every single comment that's come in, and they are, it's a mixed bag, much like we heard previously with other development. There are pros and there's cons. Just one today was actually wanting service to New York year-round, so they can live and work on the Cape. So, we still get those comments in today. So, inventory conditions, this looks at the airside facilities. So, inventory is just looking at what we have. This is the baseline of all facilities. So what we're really going to summarize here with the public is we have two equally capable runways that are about similar size and length, just over 5,000 feet. They each have approached lighting systems and instrument landing systems for poor weather conditions. And there's a taxiway network, which we'll talk about later on, in terms of how we need to make taxiway improvements. As far as landside goes, I think that one thing that may not be aware of is that there's over 45 businesses and tenants on the airport, both non-aviation. There's three different ramps for aircraft parking. There's commercial service by JetBlue, Southern Airways Express, and Cape Air. So I think people don't realize that you can start your trip to anywhere in the US from this airport every day just by using the JetBlue and Cape Air Code Share Network. So that's something that people may not be aware of. In terms of fueling car rental services, this is a full-service airport. As far as general aviation goes, everything can be done here on-site, which is a great asset to the community. And there are over 50 aircraft that are based here at the airport. Again, this summarizes more of the baseline of existing conditions that we measure everything from in the master plan. And then the economic impact, this is not done as part of the master plan, but we're using this to, again, inform and educate the public on the economic benefits from a study that was done by Mast dot, I think it was completed a couple of years ago. But there are over 1,700 jobs that are attributed to the airport as a result of all the different businesses, both direct and indirect. This is definitely a strong community asset, not just in terms of job payroll, but overall impact from the good services that are connected. Now, we're going to get into the forecast, and this has been an interesting exercise to do as someone who does forecast. The COVID-19 environment has certainly made things a little bit interesting. And generally speaking, this market has performed well, and there are some areas that are actually performing above expectations. So we didn't really change our forecast in terms of COVID. And so, based on what we're seeing, we were kind of keeping a close eye on it, but jet fuel and corporate activity was actually tracking well above what we're seeing in other airports, which leads us to believe that we have a strong, stable year-round market. So the forecast of activity, we focused on three different areas. Operations, base aircraft, and employment. Operations, we're going to see growth in itinerant traffic. That means people that are going to and coming from other places. The island market is relatively stable as ferries have increased in competition with high-speed ferries and such. I don't think that you're going to see any more shift at this point between different modes. The inter-island flying is down significantly from the 1990s because of the high-speed ferry. But at this point, we think the island market between the air and boat travel is stable. We have seen JetBlue try to increase their season. They've been trying to start early and trying to start later. Of course, COVID did impact that. But the fact that they've been trying to have and push for an incrementally longer season is something that we think is a good sign for this market. As it relates to base aircraft, the national and regional trends tend to favor small business jets and turbine-powered aircraft. Whereas on the light recreational side, you're seeing those aircraft consolidate into flying clubs. So when someone used to have their own airplane in their own hangar that flew twice a month, what they're now doing is they're consolidating into shared aircraft. So, and sometimes you may not see growth in base aircraft, but that doesn't mean that the activity is actually declining, you're just using this asset more efficiently. And as far as employments goes, those are commercial passenger boardings, is what an employment is. There is not a lot of baseline growth because of the stagnant island market. Some of the trends would actually take the island market down a little bit, but replace it with JetBlue growth. But one thing that we're seeing is that there is a large Cape-based market viable supporting year-round service. So we went ahead and looked at different forecast scenarios, such as additional summer seasonal carrier, new year, year-round regional airline, the ultra-low-cost carrier, something like an Allegion, or someone that flies a couple of times a week to Florida. But you'll notice that even these different forecast scenarios still don't take us back to previous highs. However, this would be a different type of service than what was there in the past. So, just because the passenger count is lower than what was previously done at the airport, having, say, 5,000 to 30,000 people flying to the national airspace system has a different regional economic impact than 5,000 people flying to and from Nantucket or Martha's Vine. So it's a different type of passenger that we think has real potential here at this airport. And we did get passenger booking data that shows that there's over 100,000 people. On the, 200,000 bookings annually that are generated from Cape Cod, just who live on the Cape. But there's a lot of people on the Cape that need good air service that are currently driving to Boston and Providence for their air travel needs. So again, we have the inventory, which is the conditions forecast is where we're going. We measure those against each other, and we figure out where we fall short, if so, and what those facility requirements are. So the key issues in facility requirements is roadway access. There's not really a good direct route to the airport like you see with most airports. There are a lot of decision points along the way, no matter which way you come in. The previous master plan, which was done in the early 2000s, had a 900-foot runway extension shown as part of the plan. So the runway extension that we're talking about is not actually a new concept at all. It's been around for decades, really. So we're validating what they previously showed and seeing if that still makes sense, or if it makes sense in a different manner, which we're going to do shortly. Obstruction clearance, that's an important thing for airports, and it's a priority for the FAA. Just making sure there are clear approaches. As trees grow, it impacts the, what's known as minimums, which is the cloud and ceiling clearances that you must have in order to safely land at an airport during poor weather. So unfortunately, as we all know, trees grow. This is a recurring problem for airports everywhere, and it's something that's very important. Maximizing air off development, of course, the FAA's priorities are in supporting the future of aviation needs. So we have to look at air off development first. Then if we have excess land, we can look at non-aviation revenue, and then also bring everything into FAA standard. So this is the previous master plan, which was in 2008. This was, as you can see, terminal as it exists today is shown as proposed. So this shows you the date of this plan. And as you can see, there was a proposed runway extension of 926 feet as part of the previous plan. So other airside facility requirements, in addition to runway length, FAA design standard. Again, like the safety zones, obstruction removal, taxiway improvements, which we'll get into in a little bit. And then there's tenant improvements, which is aprons and hangers. We want to be kind of very, want to identify these areas and allow for as much aviation demand, which is those jobs we talked about, to allow that to occur as much as possible. And then supporting green development. I can personally say that I don't think I've worked, I've worked at hundreds of airports. I don't think any airport does as much as proactive as what you do here, between your solar farms that you already have, with your partners at Cape Air promoting electric aviation. There's a lot of really good initiatives that have been done already, and we want to keep that momentum going. And I think that's something we want to make to recapture in this master plan. So let's get into the runway length. This is, we know this is a hot topic, and it's something we want to make sure that we essentially dotted our i's and crossed our t's as it relates to the analysis. So we followed FAA's criteria, which is they have a whole advisory circular, which is guidance of how we do analysis for runway length. Where they want you to do it is you use the general aviation fleet for aircraft 12,000, 60,000 pounds, or you use individual aircraft that's most demanding over 60,000 pounds, which is such as the JetBlue E190 aircraft, they're replacing that with the Airbus 20, or large business jet aircraft like the Gulfstream 4, 5, and Global Express. Just for reference, the total number of aircraft greater than 60,000 pounds that have used the airport in the past 10 years is over 7,000 operations. So in order to make sure that we did truly the most comprehensive analysis possible, is we did it all. We didn't use one of those criteria, we did it, we did it all. So we looked at the general aviation fleet, which is the FAA-based analysis using tables they provide. And then we looked at each of those four aircraft. And then what they allow us to do, what the FAA guidance is, is to look at using those aircraft at the maximum takeoff weight. But some of these aircraft can go to California or Europe. So what we did is, just to be realistic, is that we adjusted those performances to Hyannis specific missions. So going to places like New York or business jets on about a thousand-mile trip. So going to Florida, when we did a sample of it, there's probably about two or three operations per day that go over 1,000 miles away from Hyannis. So that's business traffic that's occurring at this airport that people may not be aware of, that people are going to places like Bozeman, Montana, Houston, Texas, West Palm Beach, every day from this airport. So we adjusted it down to the maximum takeoff length. And even after doing it five different ways and adjusting it for Hyannis, every single one of those scenarios supports a runway extension at the airport. And it, extension in no matter, which we'll get into in a little bit, that it's still on property, which is good, because that means it's less impactful. But it's more than what's there today. And there's a couple other interesting things we find is as Cape becomes more of a year-round community, which we're hearing more and more of, is that you do have to consider more of those winter operations whenever you have wet slippery runways. Typically have to add 15% to your performance calculations, additional safeguards. But it is, I mean, just another interesting talking point is the runways at Hyannis are the shortest runways used by commercial jet aircraft in higher north. And then, in addition to just the FAA standard analysis, we looked at some potential operations, just seeing to make sure that we could accommodate all of the what-if. And these are different scenarios, if you got additional air service, such as one flying to DC, or Atlanta, or Orlando, or some of the additional business jet aircraft. All of these runway requirements also fall into the same range as the FAA standard analysis. So we really did coalesce around that range of 6,640 feet to a further advanced master plan stuff. So, and then just kind of a non-numbers-based qualitative perspective, some of this I touched upon a little bit already, is that airlines are retiring and consolidating their fleet, especially in the COVID environment. When you have less aircraft type in your fleet, that's less training if you're a pilot. If all pilots are cross-trained on one or two different aircraft as opposed to 10, it makes it easier and it's less costly for your operation. And the JetBlue E190, for example, they're the only operator of that aircraft. That aircraft is phenomenal on short runways, but they're the only ones that operate it. And they publicly stated they're going to be retiring them from their fleet. So we need to be flexible in light of what's changing in commercial aviation. So there's very limited opportunity. We don't want to be kind of pigeonholed into one opportunity that could go away and ultimately harm people that try to live and work on the Cape. The commercial service, again, year-round, has faced over 200 people per day, essentially, that have to go off Cape for air transportation needs, that traffic, that emission, that quality of life. That's a lot of time going back and forth, and that number doubles when you actually account inbound market, which is different for us. And what we've seen so far in the post-COVID work environment, anything that has sunshine, sea shores, second home, those are the markets that we're seeing nationwide that are probably most resilient in the post-COVID environment. And I know we've seen some reports out of the airport here where jet fuel sales in some months are actually up significantly from three from last year for that very reason, that the Cape is a very attractive place. If that's your second home, it may very well become your primary home in this new work environment, or at least it's going to become not so secondary as it previously was, which is also going to help the airport. So that's just something that, I mean, that's the qualitative side of it, is that there's definitely a lot of demand that I think is not seen on the surface. And then, lastly, runway aside, it's FAA airfield standard. These are just mostly taxi modifications. These do not enhance passivity of the airport. And mostly, it's just looking at an older airfield that dates back 50 to 70-plus years. So we're looking at the taxiway intersections, the FAA is looking to bring those all in standard, so that everyone is making their 45 or 90-degree turns on airports, which minimize the risk of someone making a wrong turn near a runway environment. So I guess that was a lot of stuff. I just want to take a brief pause, so that with the inventory, the forecast, facility needs, and we're about to go into alternatives. If there was any questions or if I lost anybody, I do want to just do a brief pause, otherwise I'll keep going.
Can't see everybody's hands as the presentation's still. But if anybody wants to speak up and have any question at this point? Not hearing any. Rick, I would say, keep on going.
All right, we'll keep going into insert alternatives. So now the alternatives is how do we meet those facility needs that we've identified? So we know we need to be aware of our physical constraint. This is not an unconstrained area, we're aware of that. We know the environment is extremely sensitive in this region. The community and the noise surrounding the airport, that's important, but it's how the place, both master plan and the follow-on process after this. And of course, there's always cost considerations and funding. But again, we want to be informed by the business plan, County Barnstable Goals, as well as Mast dot FAA standard. So again, the process we looked at here, in terms of the, focusing on the runway length. We'll get into that. But we developed basically a screening criteria. This is a better way to show it, which is level 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. The master plan is going to focus on the immediate surroundings of the airport and meeting FAA standard. The EA, which is, would come next, will focus more on the environmental impacts, the broader community impact. So the way the master plan works is more of an inside-out focus, so starting at the airport, going out from there. The FAA funds these projects, really focused on the airport facility needs on property and the users themselves. The environmental assessment is more of an outside-in, and more of a holistic view of. The environmental assessment is more of an outside-in and more of a holistic view of the broader impact that it's then on and off airport. So understanding that the master plan does not operate or is not built in a vacuum. We wanted to identify some of these environmental and broader community impact now, which can inform the EA. So we, we kind of know where to focus our energy and focus our effort in the follow-on study, because we know that's going to be very important. So getting into the level one community constraints, you can see we've shown the wetland resources here, the residents that are in the immediate vicinity of the airport. But also understanding there are additional sensitive areas beyond this picture. So you have Barnstable Village as well as the town of Yarmouth, just, just, just off the picture here. But we know that they're going to be sensitive to a master plan. Again, level one, what got screened out in level one is because of the constraints. And the extension to runway two, four have the railroad track and, and Yarmouth Road up over on the northeast side. Runway six, where you had EMAS bed already right near the roundabout. So we know we can't extend that runway and we can't even realign it. We can't do anything with that runway. And the extension to runway one, five that goes off airport property, that's also a non-starter. But also based on the facility requirements, any reduction in length is also a non-starter for level one screening criteria. Level two, I mean, FAA always wants you to look at a no build, just make sure that, what if we did nothing? What does that mean? And as we mentioned before, is that this will not meet your future facility needs for the Cape. So a no build, that is, is something we have to consider, but this, and this will get further evaluated in the environmental assessment, but this will not meet the need of the community. So looking at different runway extension alternatives. You have a meet all facility requirements, which is an extension on both ends of the runway. Some of this is achieved with what's known as declared distances and you have a displaced threshold, which means that the landing threshold, landing point is still the same. You can only use that portion of the runway for takeoff and you have less for landing. But the takeoff number is usually a little bit more critical, so sometimes you can meet your needs. And that's good because the aircraft are still landing at the same point as they are today, but the additional length is there for takeoff. And then we, so we, we looked at the meeting all of the city requirements, because making everything work. And then, but we also know that can be a little bit more impactful. But especially the runway protection zones to extend off airport, where they want you to have full control of what goes on inside those trapazoids that you see in the second and third picture. Whereas if we can kind of bring those in a little bit. It provides for enhanced land use compatibility, because those do not extend as far off the airport. And the airport doesn't have to control as much of the off-airport land. So then again, we get into some more of the screening criteria, we look at maximum buildout, we look at no build. And then we really focus on the one that is, provides the most off-airport land use compatibility while meeting most of the facility required. So it's not the full length of the maximum facility need, but it, as close as, it's kind of a balancing act. We'll get into more of that in a little bit. But it, we're going with the most requirement and maximizing land use compatibility. But we had four different alternatives, but we're going to advance that one to the screening criteria is level three, four and five. As it relates to the environmental impact here. The master plan where again, we're going to identify what these key features are and, and set them up to be informed by the follow-on, NIBA and our environmental process. So identifying where those wetlands are and, and all the sensitive areas such. And then as it relates to the broader community impact, again, this is what really gets covered more so in the follow-on study. But we, this is related to just minor tweak to the alternatives at this point. But the runway has not changed through levels three, four and five, but we're just following that screening criteria that we talked about. But again, levels three and level four are what's really going to be the focus, the environmental assessment. That you can see here with the taxiway improvements and the runway extension, is this is the preliminary airside alternative that would be recommended for the airport layout plan to be submitted to the FAA. So essentially what we're talking about is a balanced approach. We understand that, again, we're, we need operational safety and flexibility. Need to serve the demands of the community and, and the broader Cape region. Because this is an asset, economic asset for the entire Cape. And then, but also being sensitive to community and environmental impacts. And cost and funding is there because normally that's also one of your key considerations. But really, we really did not want that to drive the boat. Actually, even by focusing on a balanced approach, that will drive the cost of the project down even more. But that was not one of, we really wanted to focus on the community and the operational safety and flexibility for the airport. So probably the less interesting stuff, and we'll kind of get this pretty quickly, is the terminal alternatives. We look at the existing provision and the JetBlue A220 is a slightly larger aircraft. Or if you had multiple airlines operating regional aircraft at the same time, that would also be in that 150 passenger range. There is a slight additional space need for the airport. And, and looking at things like the baggage claim area, there's not a baggage carousel, there's a holdroom. And so it's a little bit limited in size, but we think we can kind of shuffle around within the existing footprint. And get most of what we need without having to actually expand the terminal, but it still meets the city requirements. And then as it relates to general aviation, landside support, again, this talks about the access. We, the access, as far as the airport is concerned, the FAA can only allow us to look at things on property. So understanding that most of the roads to and from the airport are off-airport property. It needs to be a coordinated effort and we recommend a separate standalone study for that. But that, that's, and there's a signage study underway right now with Airport 12 for signage and. Development areas, this is again, the hangers, the apron areas that we talked about, just identifying where those can go. It's the open space near existing facilities. So there's not any new development areas that aren't already adjacent to existing development for that. And as well as green opportunities with Cape Air being the launch customer for electric aircraft. We wanted to identify some sites that we, that support electric aviation, both commercial with Cape Air and general aviation in the future. And so the best way to do that is to be adjacent to the terminal. We want, and we need to continue coordination with the Cape Cod Commission on all development, but promoting the green opportunities for the airport as well. So all of that kind of combines to essentially the full recommended plan for the ALP, which is the runway, the airside stuff we talked about, and the EA development criteria. Now turn it back over to Katie, if that was the best I've done without coffee since, 12 hours since coffee, everything.
Thank you, Rick. If you could just go back to the, the one slide above that that shows, thank you, the preliminary recommended alternative. So we tried to give you a quick overview of all of the elements that we'll be looking at as part of the master plan. Obviously with the runway extension. I know that Rick did touch upon it, that we're looking at a balanced approach. So when we looked at these alternatives, we kept on taking the runway and narrowing it down, narrowing it down, narrowing it down. That we could look at all of those elements that are going to inform our decision of how we're going to present a recommendation for the runway length. And in doing that, we were able to identify that the, the best potential would be to look at additional runway length on both sides. So basically both sides of runway 1533 with an extension near the independent drive area. And the extension going towards the Yarmouth Road area and balancing that approach. So the reason why we did this, we said, look, we can implement what they call displaced threshold, which is what Rick alluded to. That allows the aircraft to land in the relatively same threshold or same location that they're coming into the airport now. But it gives them the added length that they would need for takeoff. So as you can imagine, in contaminated conditions, snow, rain, heat in the summertime. The aircraft would have the ability to have that additional length that they need for takeoff, which would accommodate those aircraft that are currently using our facility. That balanced approach is what we looked at because it meets, it, it, it checks all the boxes in terms of looking at the community, knowing that, you know, we perhaps don't want to look at a runway extension that was looked at back in 2008. Where it was all on one-sided, all on the independent drive area. There would be impact that would be occurring most likely to Barnstable Village. There could be impact as well to Hyannis Park Civic Association in their neighborhood if we went in that route. So we really, really took in a lot of the comments that we've received thus far. And took that runway length and started to narrow it to say, what are our true needs? And how many boxes can we check off in terms of meeting our requirements? If you can go to the next step, Rick, and then we'll take questions. So the master plan, Rick alluded to this. We went through our screening for all of the alternatives that we've looked at to meet our facility needs. We provided times where the public can communicate with us, let us know what their concerns are. But this isn't the end of the line. The master plan identifies just that, our master plan for the airport moving forward. Taking into account what we anticipate will happen in the future at the airport and what's happening in the aviation community. From here, we'll wrap up the master plan. The FAA will review it, making sure that we're meeting all of our federal requirements. But then it goes into an environmental review. That's also required by the FAA. The environmental review will take into account local environmental regulations. So we'll be working with the, we'll be working with local state and the Cape Cod Commission to evaluate the alternatives that we're looking at. So the public is going to have another bite at the apple. They will have continuous discussions with us in terms of what we plan to do here at future for the airport. To meet community needs as well as meeting the needs of the aviation facility in general. That is needed for our business, commercial aviation, for them to thrive and survive. So that's really kind of where we are at the plan. That's all I have tonight for the presentation and we'd just like to open up for any questions that you may have. So Rick, if you could stop sharing your screen and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Rick. Counselor Clark, I just saw your hand up and I saw you disappear.
Yeah, sorry, I hit the wrong button. Thank you very much, President. This is quite the extensive, uh, PowerPoint presentation. This is going to be on the support website, the website.
Yes, it will, we will be presenting something similar on Monday, the 22nd at 6:00 PM. It has a few more slides to it. We tried to really, I know it was long, but we tried to shorten it up. We have a few more slides that are a little bit more informative for the public, but it will be available as soon as possible on the, on the website.
The towns as well at the airport?
Yes, you, the town website, we posted on our airport website, which you get through the town's website. So either way, we'll, we'll have it posted, but we'll also provide a copy to you tonight is what I typically do. I provide that to Lynn.
Like more for the general public.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Rapp, please.
Thank you very much, Katie and Rick. I appreciate the thorough presentation. Wow. So you're talking about extending the runway that heads to Independence Park, predominantly that one. Is that correct? Just curious about takeoffs and landings and headwinds and whatnot. Does that have any effect on time of year or which direction planes are landing and taking off in? And that, that's one question I had. The other thing is I'm sure you've had input as far as scheduling and availability of flights. It's pretty, pretty frustrating to want to go to Boston to catch a 7:00 AM flight. The only flight out of Hyannis leaves at 7:00 AM. It's reasonable. It's $99 one way. That's reasonable. But it gets you up there at 7:30 and, you know, you've missed your 6:00 AM flight. You know, it used to be the P and B had a bus that, you know, you had to leave at quarter or four in the morning and that, that barely got you there. If you're going internationally or, or whatnot. So that has concern when you compare with flying to Nantucket. There's five flights that go to Nantucket and the earliest one leaves at six. Interesting, interesting enough, that flight costs $95 one way. And there, the morning flights are all sold out. And that's, you know, we know that's the trades that, that utilize that flight. But so, you know, I think this is great. You're looking for extension, but I'd like to see some more availability. And so that I can connect to Boston and, and PF Green or wherever. And it's just for me, lengthening a runway doesn't, doesn't do that. And it's unfortunate because I know at one time, you know, Air New England. You could hop on that flight, get to Boston and connect pretty easily. And there were very regular flights, both to Boston and from Boston. And so I'd like to see you, you know, convince Cape Air or somebody to add some, some earlier flights to make it a little easier so that those of us don't have to get up at three in the morning to drive to Boston to catch a 6:00 AM flight. So that's just my, my thoughts. You have a lot, you have a lot to, to take on, but.
Let me try to answer some of your questions then. So the first one in regards to takeoff and landing and the extension being, looking at Independence Park. When we started to look at the facility as a whole, because of the constraints that we have with the other runway. The runway that you commonly see if you're going past Staples Park and Staples Plaza. There's so many constraints for that runway that we really couldn't do anything for that runway. So the property that the airport actually owns surrounding the approach ends of 1533, which is Independence Park on, on the west end, Yarmouth Road on the east. That was the best alternative to look at. The runways are actually used equally in terms of wind conditions. You'll find that more often in the summertime, that 624s be used more often in the wintertime, the opposite runway is being used, which is the one we're talking about for the extension. Both have instrument landing capabilities, so they can both be accommodating aircraft in inclement weather conditions. So, but from a land perspective, 1533 was the best option that did not have the constraints that the other did. In terms of scheduling and flight availability, you are speaking to the choir, singing to the choir. I agree with you. I think that the flight opportunities that are being offered from the airport are not getting out of the Cape and Island bubble. We need to look beyond that so that we can get our community beyond Hyannis, get them to their final destination. When we started on this path for the master plan, we looked at where people are connecting out of Cape Cod. The destinations that they're going to are JFK, New York, New Jersey, Washington DC, Florida and Atlanta. Those were the highest destinations for people coming out of the Cape. The highest towns for people coming out of the Cape are obviously located around commercial centers and where there's a lot of activities. So Barnstable, Sandwich, Mashpee, Falmouth, Provincetown, those were the high towns of community members leaving the Cape, going to Boston or Providence to catch a flight. So when we did that analysis, we said, you know, there has to be a way that we can attract this airport to airlines that are willing to go beyond the Cape. And we've been talking to several airlines, including having JetBlue expand their service and as well as American Airlines. And both companies, and speaking to them about this master plan, are very interested in, in what we're doing at the airport or what we could potentially do at the airport, especially American. American Airlines does not have a strong presence in New England. This is their opportunity to have a strong presence in New England. But some of the aircraft that they do may need a longer runway to be able to operate, especially during contaminated conditions. What I mean is wintertime operations. So when I spoke to them about our master plan and how we're proceeding forward, it sparked a lot of interest. So I think that Cape Air does an excellent job when it comes to flying to the islands. They do an excellent job otherwise to serve this community and they have for years. There are some people unfortunately that will not jump onto a nine-passenger plane. So we need to look at alternatives for our community that meet their comfort level, but also meet the needs that they have for getting beyond the Cape. And for doing business from Cape Cod. We want to be able to live where we. We want to be able to live where we work and work where we live. And we can't do that if we don't have facility that supports that.
Yeah. Thank you for the response, Katie. I appreciate it. I, I am hopeful American or American Eagle anyway could, could have a presence down here. It'd be great.
I agree.
Great question. Thank you for the explanation and answer to those questions. It is very helpful. Any other questions? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Vivek. I just want to put out there, since I'm the counselor who probably lives closest to the airport, and I would say that the immediate downtown Hyannis area is probably the most impacted by the airport, at least in terms of noise and that sort of thing. You know, when you guys talk about community and reaching out to the community, I'm curious to know whether that community, is that a more regional group involving your, you know, biggest users of the airport? Is that residents of Barnstable? And how much have you targeted the immediate areas? Because my sense from being in Precinct Nine, which is historically the lowest voting precinct, probably also historically the most financially precarious sort of distressed precinct in town, we're also probably the most heavily impacted by the airport. So in all those maps in that lower left corner, it's not lost on me that that's where my house is and that's Precinct Nine, and it's probably one of the most heavily populated areas, just sort of south of the Staples Plaza, the Barnstable Road area. And I'm all for development and I feel like sometimes I'm always poo-pooing airport plans. But I'm also incredibly cognizant of the fact that, you know, for the people struggling at Cromwell Port, they are the least likely to know about these public hearings. They're the least likely to participate in those public hearings. So I do feel a heavy responsibility to be a strong voice for those people and to stick up for those people. So more of a comment than a question, and I, I do want you to know that I am going to attend Monday night because although I did my best to follow along tonight, it's a lot of information and it's pretty complicated stuff. And I want to be able to understand it so that when I am talking with my immediate constituents and they are, you know, complaining about that level of noise, and it definitely picks up in the summer with that, you know, seasonal jet service, that, you know, I'm well-versed and educated to be able to talk to them about it and get them information. So I look forward to seeing you Monday night and hearing more. Thank you, as always.
Thank you. And President Vivek, if I could just respond to one item on that. And thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy, for raising those questions. We did do our best with making sure that the public was fully aware of the process and how they can get involved. So when we started that back in October, we had legal ads that were in all local papers. So we had them in the register, Yarmouth Register, we had them Barnstable Patriot, Cape Cod Times. We also had a number of press releases. We have about 60 news clippings of different papers that covered the master plan. We sent out postcards to a one-mile radius of businesses and residents that live within the airport to make sure that, you know, people get news in different ways. So we tried to cover the gamut. So we did it with newspapers, legal ads, press releases. I did two radio interviews with local radio stations, WXPK. And then we did a lot of social media and posts on our Facebook and Instagram just because we don't know how people are getting their news. So we tried to cover the gamut to make sure they were getting the best information. And then in regard to the noise, we are analyzing that as part of the overall plan. We are, the balanced approach that we looked at actually is, is an, and I wouldn't say an improvement. It's a, the balanced approach looks at the noise, but it also shows that by balancing and putting an extension on both runway ends, you're actually improving the situation from a noise standpoint. Not improving it over existing situations, but improving it in terms of that level, that balanced approach to looking at improved at the airport.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Any other questions? And, you know, I, I echo Counselor Shaughnessy's comment that if you like another, see another presentation, I may try to make some time too and watch again. So there's a lot to absorb there and you may find yourself, if anybody's in the community that's listening, watching, see, you know, there's a lot to, and I just find repetition is a great way to continue to learn and absorb more and have an opportunity also to ask questions as well. So thank you for your present. Wouldn't stop. Counselor, stop.
No, I'm, I'm just, Charlie, Charlie McLaughlin needs to make a.
I just saw him, but thank you. Yes. Charlie McLaughlin.
Thanks. I just want to observe our late partner at our office, Bob Smith, always had concerns about the, the impact of the airport and the area. And we're seeing some of those impacts and dealing with them now. But I think, given the costs that we are dealing with, TWA and P and otherwise, I think much, I was a bit distressed to see that cost is the last item on your to-do list. And I would respectfully suggest much sooner than later that you get some cost estimates in line to see what impact, what demands that may be on the town of Barnstable, albeit in service of a regional need. It's going to come out of Barnstable taxpayers and before we spend all kinds of money, it will be expensive to go through this NEPA process. We, we ought to, I suggest tag in to a, a significant discussion of what the cost is going to be because, and what matching funds that may be and grant monies. But I, I think to, to get too far down this road and then have some cost presented that is difficult to meet, no matter how well-intentioned everyone is in trying to do so. We've got a lot of demands and we haven't fully felt the effects of COVID financially. Hopefully, we've got through the worst of it. But I, I just think that we've had this discussion at other organizations. I know we've had a similar discussion at Cape and Beenin' Electric and what we can and what we can't do given the impacts on the towns. And I just mentioned this as a cautionary tale. We need to, I would strongly recommend that you jump on the cost estimate sooner or later.
So Charlie, we didn't cover the cost estimate tonight because we needed brevity in the, even though it was a long presentation. Costs are part of the overall master plan process. We have estimators that are looking at all of the intended improvements that the airport is proposing at this point in time. So that is part of the plan. Secondarily, we're an enterprise fund. There's no taxpayer dollars that pay for any part of the airport. The airport makes its own money and we have to spend our own money on airport property. So there is no taxpayer dollars that would be used for this project at all. This would all be airport funds. So in regards to the NEPA process that we have to go through, that process is required by the Federal Aviation Administration. It is a process that allows for more input from the public and that is paid 95% by the FAA and Mass dot Aeronautics. So we are looking at costs as part of our overall plan. I just didn't cover it in detail because the most important thing that people wanted to know is, how is a runway intended to go and to impact them in their lives? So whether it's a good impact because it means that you can go for further distances and get on an aircraft and fly directly to Florida, or whether it's an impact to your community and where you live. Those are the things that were of paramount concern for us to discuss.
I appreciate that. I just, again, respectfully recommend that you.
Charlie McLaughlin, with all due respect, with all due thought, and I do appreciate your input. But I, I know that, you know, that Director Service, Katie Service has, you know, done her due diligence in regards to that and I do expect those things to, to play out as time goes along. So, and I appreciate, Katie, your time and your attention to the brevity of it. We do have a full agenda and I know that you did your best and of course, Mr. Lucas, to, to make that happen. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Without any further ado, any other questions that we might have? Well, bid you adieu and we just thank you for, again, great presentation, understood the impact of that. Of course, if anybody has any questions, I, I know for a fact that the response time is very quick. Any questions you may have? And again, feel free to watch this presentation again. There's other opportunities to absorb this knowledge and the impact that it'll have on our community. So thank you very much. Good time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a great night. Take care.
You too.
Okay. Thanks, Katie. Shall I, Mr. President, should I continue with the town manager communication? Great. The town of Barnstable, staff from the town of Barnstable, Hyannis Fire Department and Barnstable Housing Authority worked together to provide first dose COVID-19 vaccinations of four Barnstable Housing Authority elderly housing complexes at the adult community center. A total of 336 persons were vaccinated with first dose of Moderna, vaccine during a three-day period from March 11th and March 13th, including 10 homebound residents. We want to thank everyone involved for their dedication and hard work. As previously briefed, the town of Barnstable was informed on February 16th that the Conservation Law Foundation filed a clean water complaint against the town. CLF has still not yet served that complaint to this town and the litigation process will not start until that happens. We will continue to keep you advised through future executive session as we progress through this legal matter. We are proceeding with a task in the budget action calendar for fiscal year 2022 as scheduled. We have finalized and submitted the proposed FY 2022 capital improvement program. Town council, first read of the proposed FY 2022 capital plan is tonight. The public hearings are planned to commence on April 3rd. We are commencing final internal review of our proposed FY 2022 operating budget on March 22nd. We are planning to, at present, we're planning to level service the budget for FY 22. The town manager will conduct a public hearing on the proposed rate changes for the water, sewer and solid waste transfer station operations on March 30th, 2021, at 10:00 AM via Zoom. For any information on our fiscal year operating budgets, please view the town's open budget website at budget dot townofbarnstable dot US. The planning and development department is proceeding with a request for a proposal for consultant services to assist the town with our community visioning project, which is the first phase of our local comprehensive plan update. The scope of work will include consultation on establishing the LCP committee as well as organizing and implementing the broad community outreach effort associated with this project. We will keep the council and the public informed as we progress. I have attached, Peter Patrick, this evening, a summary of the recently passed American Rescue Plan Act. Barnstable's shares anticipated to be on the order of $7.1 million. Specific guidance as to use of those funds will be forthcoming from the U.S. Treasury. Town Clerk Ann Quirk is announcing a new, fast and efficient way to obtain vital records of the birth, death or marriage that occurred in the town of Barnstable. Vital records are now online. So the link is on our website where you can find steps for searching and obtaining the certified record and conveniently paid by credit card online. The document will then be mailed out the next business day. If you choose to apply for a vital record of birth, death or marriage that occurred in the town through the mail and pay by check, please go to the link online for those instructions. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Santos, who's going to give us our monthly update on the comprehensive wastewater management.
May I share my screen? Good evening. Council President, Town Counselor Stan Santos, Director of Public Work. A brief update since our last meeting. As regards to the comprehensive wastewater management plan, it still is at the Cape Cod Commission undergoing its consistency review. When we met with them about a month ago, they said that they would do it quickly and I anticipate getting the results of that review within the next month. Joint Base Cape Cod, I updated last month that after quite some time, a year in fact, negotiations are back underway and have actually been going very well. And while I don't have any results to share with you, you know, I feel optimistic as, as do others that are involved in the process that an agreement is, is likely to be reached with, with the government and I'll keep you informed about that. And you may remember relative to that is, that doesn't commit us to anything. That just provides us some alternatives in the future that we, that we may wish to take advantage of depending on how our search for affluent disposal sites go. Mothers Park is our proposed location in Centerville for a sewer pump station. And that is currently undergoing legal review. And I'll let you know as soon as that's tied up and wrapped up and we can proceed with seeking funds for design. We don't need to construct that for quite some time, but we would like to nail down the site and get the funds for design so we can move that closer to the finish line. Route 28 and Yarmouth Road, Willow Street. We continue to coordinate our work there with the State Department of Transportation. That's their project and we will be installing some sewer infrastructure as part of that project. We have coordinated our state revolving fund eligibility for that sewer work with DEP and that's gone well. And then the recent closure of Route 28 that was anticipated to go through March 21st, actually wrapped up yesterday and Route 28 reopened last night and is fully functional. That is planned to be the only complete closure for any length of time as part of that DOT project. They will be bidding the overall large project in May of this year. Projects that we have underway, Strawberry Hill Road project. This is what we're doing in conjunction with Vineyard Wind. We're finalizing our design of the sewer installation as well as the pump station, which is going to be located at the intersection of Craigville Beach Road and Strawberry Hill Road. And we anticipate fall construction of that work in conjunction with Vineyard Wind. A lot of preparatory work, design work, working out construction details and contractors and that's all ongoing now at a, at a very good pace. Route 28 East, that's a pump station that's going to be at the intersection of Route 28 and Finney's Lane. Preliminary design is underway there and we are coordinating our work with the Hyannis Water System to address dead ends, dead ends in the water system there so we can have a fully looped system. That project is anticipated to begin in a year from now, the spring of 2022. Regarding the Long Pond Project, Finney Lane Project and Route 28 to 149, Trump Line Project. Those are surveys that we have underway. The Long Pond Survey is complete. We're reviewing the draft. We anticipate getting the other surveys this month. And as soon as we get the surveys in, we'll be able to start our preliminary design work, which we'll get through right away. Other projects we have underway, Rendezvous Lane in Barnstable Village. We are moving a pump station out of the flood zone and that construction is currently underway. The Solid Handling Project, this is our septicage building is what we call it, where we take in septicage at the wastewater treatment plant. That project, to rehabilitate that building is being advertised this week. We have a pump station improvement program that's been appropriated and that has also been advertised as of last week. And then finally, our Versus Way vacuum system decommissioning. What we're doing there as part of our system is a vacuum sewer system, which basically works like a vacuum. It sucks the wastewater to the plant rather than it being pushed to the plant. And it doesn't, it's not a very effective and efficient system and we're going to be replacing parts of it over time. So this part is going to be done in conjunction with the shared use path that's going to be constructed on the west side of Pierce's Way. With that, that's my update for the month. With that, that's my update for the month, and I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Santos. Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dan, and forgive me if this was touched upon on a prior update. The storage, this pump station at Mother's Park, is that in lieu of what was going to potentially be, I think it was three-ten Main Street?
Yes, exactly. That's that's the proposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions to Director Santos? And once we are done with that, I'm actually going to go back to see if any question for Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn. So any other questions for Director Santos? Thank you, Director Santos, for your presentation is always thorough and to the point, and I appreciate all the progress that the young man is doing in regards to that. But now I want to open it up, does anybody have any questions or comments for Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn at this moment? Counselor Clark?
Thank you very much. I want to thank the town of those who are working to actually hold the vaccine at first rate pump, the operation at four C. And I appreciate the town's outreach, I hope, for some rest. That I'm assuming the in the queue by the face, but I also have a wonderful compliment from our homebound West Barnstable residents, the fact that we received the vaccine to the pride of someone from the Hyannis Water System. But we thank all those who did the job that happened. There are other homebound residents to whom do we send the request?
Yes, Counselor Clark, you could send those directly to me or our council engaging, that's where we're coordinating those lists through. We're working in partnership with a number of different providers and the highest, all of our fire districts to get after that amount.
But I may have got a question.
Sure.
Something seems to be about someone who had difficulty getting a second shot. Scheduling was, was early in the game and wasn't pre-scheduled. So where do we go with regard?
Again, we have, if you look on the website where I can provide, we have set up phone lines in English, Portuguese, Spanish, and emails in English, Portuguese, Spanish. If they leave those details, we will get them in touch with an appropriate provider. We're feeling a lot of those now with folks, you know, that they need a particular type of vaccine for their second. We're just hooking them up wherever the opportunity presents itself. Obviously, four Cs, they're running multiple clinics of different type every day there now. And we're working, Harbor Health's got something going on for Zion Center. We're working diligently with our Brazilian community. Obviously, there, as of Monday, much larger segment of that community, which is the hardest hit in our community, is going to be eligible. So we're very excited to really work with them to get after that as well. We were able to do some of that community last weekend, but their numbers of elderly are very limited compared to their working.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Counselor Bogan?
Not a question, but a commendation for Eagle Scout, I mean Assistant Town Manager Clyburn. Thank you for the revision to the thinking with regard to the retention of the consultants associated with the local comprehensive plan. As you recall, last month I had expressed some concern about establishing the the committee before we retained the consultant. I think the consultants inside will be very beneficial through the process, so I commend town administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. I'd just like to reiterate too, you know, I've been privy to a lot of what's going on with the vaccine vaccines that the town of Barnstable has procured in the administration thereof, and just want to applaud, you know, the whole staff, and, you know, these are, these are really true heroes. I had an opportunity to be at the adult community center on Saturday, really go around and thank everybody and everybody involved. Chief Burke was there. Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn was there, and Health Director, and this, and the list goes on, Tamara, who works for a health department that stepped up to the plate literally and volunteered to be that person that can translate, be supportive, and banish somebody that wasn't necessarily hired for that position, but rose to the occasion. And there's a lot of stories, you know, Lynne Orion, Madeline Noonan, all these different people working together. Cannot say enough about the staff, the people of this community that are helping through this process. Reaching, we are, we're reaching our underrepresented part of the community who are fearful, quite honestly, and sometimes just don't know how to obtain information in regards to being vaccinated. So, round two of applause. Again, I can't say enough about that. Something else too, I wanted to, just kind of in in lieu of that, this local comprehensive plan, it's something I'm, you know, I know leadership is very passionate about, Vice President Schnepp and I, town administration, you know, through this process, and I know we're getting a lot of opinions and a lot of requests of how maybe it was done in the past or how we're moving forward, things of that nature. I'm I'm not a professional planner. I didn't go to school to be a professional planner. However, I will say leadership's focused on making sure that this process is as inclusive and representative to all our communities and demographics in our town. Yes, our civic associations will be engaged in regards to this. They are very important parts of our community. And, you know, we're, you know, concerned about housing, recreation, zoning, infrastructure, water quality, recreation, just to name a few. No particular, this is in no particular order of the groups that I'm going to mention. I will be making myself personally available to civic associations. I don't know exactly what that will look like moving forward, but I also know and believe that I'll have special guest appearances with me as the process goes along. And if there's anything that we've learned this past year, and I mean this, is that we need to build trust. We need to build trust, and we need to have unincluded and underrepresented people groups in our town that either don't have the time because they're working two or three jobs to live here. Their races, nationality, communications, and I'm also talking about single moms, small business owners that are working their tails off to try to get the work to live here and to have success here on Cape Cod. They need to be involved in that. And yes, again, I will talk to civic associations or whatever, but this is a entire community outreach, and I need counselor support, and we need counselor involvement. You know, when Counselor Shaughnessy talks about the underrepresented people in Hyannis, I I believe that. And I also, you know, again, I'm not just picking, there's other people as well. And I'm not saying we're not going to represent other parts of the community. I'm just saying that. It's important that we have all ears, all people group. And I just want to reiterate that, and just kind of let you know what my plan are, and Councilor Schnepp as well. This is a conversation that's ongoing, and and we will move forward and as quickly as possible, you know, and again. But at the same time, we have to build trust, and we are going to grow, but we're going to grow, and this is something actually that Elizabeth, Director Jenkins shared with me, we're going to grow at the speed of trust. So with that, I just wanted to just give you an idea of where we're going with that local plan. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, so we've got, we've also moved along, we've got a pot done already, we still have a little bit, so please continue to bear with us. Vice President Schnepp, if we could, I could ask you if we could act in the minutes, please. You're on mute, Paula.
Okay. All right, I'm going to like to entertain a motion that we approved the minutes of our last town council meeting held on March fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Any discussion? Counselor Bogan, please. You're on mute. Counselor Bogan?
Yeah, 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 sorry about that. Just one, as I mentioned a moment ago, in with regard to the revision to the local comprehensive plan process, I did urge that we retain the consultant before we establish the committee during the last meeting. That is not in the minutes. So I would move that the minutes be amended to reflect that I did recommend that the consultant be hired before we establish the committee, so that the consultant and assistant constitute it.
Do we have a motion on the table? Second, any discussion? I I will say, you know, it's not, I think Town Clerk and Quirk does a great job at our minute, and I also believe Bennett Murphy does, Assistant Town Clerk does a great job. This is, I think this is important because we did make a decision based off of this, you know, partly because of this moving forward, so I would be in favor of that amendment.
If I may, Mr. President, I certainly didn't mean it as a criticism of Miss Work Firm or Assistant Town Clerk.
No, no, I I totally, I just wanted to, again, further endorse the campaign. Any other, without any, you know, for discussion, easy left, we have a, we have to have a a vote on it. We'll call votes.
You're taking a vote on the amendment to the minutes, is that?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
On the amendment?
Yes.
All right, Assilis?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rat Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Steinhilde?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bogan. Any further discussion on the minutes? If not, I would also entertain or call for a vote on the minutes as a whole, please.
Okay.
On the minutes as amended.
On the minutes as amended. Counselor Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Callum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rat Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Steinhilde?
Yes.
Assilis?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Council of Communications for elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Counselor Bogan, please.
One last time, I did want to let folks know that the Cape Faith Church, which is located on Ostervale West Barnstable Road, will be holding a car hop on March twenty-seventh at one o'clock. That's a play on words to your traditional car hop coupled with a bunny hop. It's a full family event. There will be a gift giveaway. There's a gift basket giveaway, and it happens to be our president's place of worship. So I encourage all folks to attend at varying, one o'clock on the twenty-seventh. And thank you, Mr. President, for bringing it to my attention.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Bogan, for making your announcement. I do appreciate it. Any other Council of Communication? Oh, Counselor Mary?
Thank you, President Levek. I just wanted to reach out and thank the staff. Just, I received my postcard today. I don't know if anybody got the postcard, if you can see it. This is from the town regarding the citizens, the citizens informed to discuss the sewer assessment ordinance. So I assume it's going out to all residents of the town. I might be, you can see heads nodding. So again, this is certainly a topic that needs to be thoroughly vetted, discussed, and 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 really important for all of us to reach out to everyone we see to make sure that we all carry the correct knowledge about what's going on with that's a wastewater treatment plan. Thanks. Thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you. That's a, that's a great announcement. Thank you, Counselor Mary. Really important moving forward. Counselor Shaughnessy?
Just want to throw out there that this Saturday, March twentieth, from twelve to three PM, will be first day of spring being celebrated on Main Street Hyannis, so they are going to be DJs, games, warming stations. So bring your family, come down to downtown Hyannis and spend some time on Main Street.
That's exciting. Good news. Things are set up. Any other? Okay, not seeing any other. I would say let's take a five-minute break, and let's take care of yourself, and and we'll be back in five minutes. Next presentation. Thank you. Please be prompt. This is now, um, this is going to be our workshop in regards to, um, uh, where we stand as far as green communities go, at this point, I'd like to hand it over to this town manager Andy Fivern for a little introduction, and I appreciate everybody being here, we have with us Director David Anthony of Asset Management, this is Lisa Sullivan, Will DiRigo, and, um, Robert Brennan with us as well, uh, here to give us some input and, uh, answer any questions that we might have. So, without further ado, uh, Fivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, it is my pleasure to kick off this evening's workshop on the stretch code, seven eighty C M R, chapter one, one, five, appendix Alpha, Alpha, of the Massachusetts State Building Code. Before I turn it over to David Anthony, I just wanted to set the table a bit, um, a little bit of background, in the past decade, town of Barnstable has become a leader in the region and state when it comes to incorporating green initiatives, and municipal operations. We've installed over sixteen megawatts of renewable energy devices on town property and on town buildings, solar, wind, and cogent. We have invested heavily in partnership with Cape Light Compact to make our buildings more energy efficient. We continue to engage that partnership every year during our C I. We have installed public E V charging stations, purchased electric and hybrid vehicles as part of the municipal fleet that employees use to serve the public in our daily life. We have received from the state a leading by example award for our comprehensive energy plans, and we are consulted on a regular basis by other communities on how we have achieved what we have. From the various town councils over years, through our town manager, to each of the departments, we have continually looked to incorporate practical initiatives and technology to be good environmental steward. This workshop tonight is part of that effort to build on our passive success and achieve even greater results. With that, I will turn this informational workshop over to David Anthony.
If I could, Director Anthony, I just also wanted to recognize, uh, Building Commissioner Brian Florence.
So, um, good evening, thank you, uh, Mr. President, and through you to all of the counselors and to all of the folks on the Zoom meeting tonight. Um, very, very quickly, in two thousand and ten, this town sought to become designated as a green community through the Department of Energy Resources. Other times since two thousand and ten, the topic has been discussed, uh, but the effort has always failed to gain any momentum completion. Uh, one of the major hurdles, uh, has been the proposed adoption of the stretch code. The workshop tonight has, uh, the following objective. To provide an updated status on our current efforts to become a green community through D O E R. To assemble a panel of people to offer their perspectives on the issue of the stretch code and meeting criteria in five of the designation process. And to offer a venue tonight where town counselors can discuss the issue with other counselors to make knowledgeable people, to, to make knowledgeable people with different areas of expertise available to those town counselors, so that hopefully we can get answers to questions that they might have on any of these issues, and to share this learning and information environment. So to that end, uh, very briefly, uh, at, at the last meeting, we had discussed the four previous criterion, and we continue to make progress on those, the status has not changed much since, uh, March fourth. So, um, we're going to move right into an introduction of the panel, if people do have questions about the other, uh, the other criterion, we can certainly discuss those. So with us tonight, we, uh, have, in addition to Brian Florence, our esteemed Building Commissioner, um, who will be assisting me with the presentation. Uh, we have Lisa Sullivan, who joined D O E R in October of twenty nineteen as the Green Communities Program Coordinator, eighty-five communities in the southeast. Part of that time, she worked as a planner for a regional planning agency for two years, providing regional energy planning assistance and technical support to seventeen member communities. She has worked for the town of Bridgewater, uh, in a variety of roles, including, including administering a number of green community grants. Uh, with her is William DiRigo, who supports efforts to lead program implementation of MassSave Heating and Cooling. William directs his team to support H V A C contractor training, distributor, and trade ally outreach, and website management on behalf of MassSave, MassSave is an important partner with the Cape Light Compact and offers an opportunity for residents and businesses to find ways to adopt energy efficiency. Is a Massachusetts construction supervisor, license holder, and he is also a subject matter expert and works on the Department of Energy Resources Stretch Code informational sessions, which occur around the Commonwealth. He's here in case you have specific questions about that, and he is also familiar with how hers ratings, which is home energy ratings, work, as he has done thousands of. And finally, we have Robert Brennan Junior, who is the president of Cape Built Companies, a former environmental and land use attorney, and is currently developing sixty units of workforce housing on Pleasant Street, right around the corner in Hyannis. And I would invite him later on to invite any, or to add any other remarks he may have. So, as we move forward, uh, the plan for this evening was to invite Brian Florence, our Building Commissioner, to discuss Criterion Five and plans to satisfy Criterion Five, which is one of the tasks that he was given to do, and then he'll give us a very brief update on where we are in that process. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, David. Um, good evening, Mr. President, and members of the town council and colleagues. I appreciate your time tonight, and, um, this a bit, the opportunity to be able to discuss the subject with you. Um, so, and on the March first, fourth, um, town council meeting, as, as you've, as you may recall, um, David went through a sig, or Director Anthony went through a significant, um, update on Criterion One through Four of the Green Communities Act. Uh, my role here today is to kind of just discuss, as he said, Criterion Five, um, why this criterion has been an obstacle for Barnstable uh, in attaining a green community's designation, and what we hope to do about it. So, Criterion Five is a requirement, there's a requirement for, to adopt it, an energy efficiency code. And, and it, what it basically reads, and, and this is abbreviated, a municipality must minimize the life cycle cost of all newly constructed homes and buildings. What does it mean to minimize the life cycle cost of all newly constructed homes and buildings? Well, the life cycle of a building starts with the planning phase of construction of a building, and it ends with demolition. The life cycle cost of a structure, or all the costs associated with that structure until the date it's demolished. In the case of the Green Communities Act, to minimize the life cycle cost describes a reduction in the total cost of ownership of a building through energy savings. There are other ways to minimize the life cycle cost of the building, but the person, for the purpose of this discussion, we're just gonna stick to energy savings. So the intent of Criterion Five is to encourage communities to adopt an energy code, as I said, that will affect, uh, have the effect of reducing the cost associated with the energy consumption of a building, thereby reducing the life of, cost of new building. Um, as you've heard from David, there's been past attempts to, uh, pass the stretch code in town. I didn't participate in that as a citizen or as a public official. Um, however, I understand that there were several reasons why the stretch code didn't appeal to the community, and for informational purposes, some of those are Criterion Five is an inferred mandate to adopt the stretch code. There are, um, high upfront costs associated with compliance, recuperating the post-construction cost, um, which means, um, getting rebates is, is disappointing and frustrating at best, um, those are often not what they're, um, touted to be. The stretch code and, and the other codes that are, and, and it's not just the stretch code, there's a couple of options in our building code. Um, it, there are overly complex standards that make it impossible for homeowners and, and contractors to be able to pull their own permit. In, in our building code, for example, you can, as a homeowner, pull the permit. Except where it comes to this, because of the, um, complexity of, of the, uh, the topic, basically. Barnstable, and I would say Cape Cod, has an exaggerated labor and production, um, uh, cost compared to communities off Cape. Another issue that I've, we, we've discussed is, uh, loss of local control over permitting, loss of local control over inspections, and, um, occupancy permits, uh, that, that are required to be signed off by a third party, um, uh, prior to your building department being able to do that, uh, issue a certificate of occupancy. Uh, modern building standards eliminate the need for third-party design and testing, but the stand, those standards haven't caught up with that reality. Um, in other words, buildings are built to a standard, um, that is so high right now, um, that it can be presumed that those structures meet this requirement, the requirement of the stretch code or the testing requirement, but we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet in terms of, uh, how the codes read. And then, um, a couple more misperceptions of compliance, uh, that in existing structures are exempt. Um, existing structures that undergo fifty percent, uh, uh, scale renovations, those are subject to new construction requirements for everything, that, that includes structural, electrical, and yes, energy compliant. Um, the stretch code's inability to keep up with our building codes has led to confusion and expense. While I may agree or disagree with some of the reasons that I've just listed, they're not my words. Those are simply concerns with the stretch code that have been articulated to me, and I pass them on to you. Um, my personal opinion of those does not matter. The fact is that I can, I can enforce any code you give me. If you, if you tell me that, or, or the state tells me that we want our houses made out of, uh, twenty-four-inch thick closed-cell Styrofoam and shrink wrap and bubble wrap, I can do that, it, it's as simple as that, I have no opinion on, um, any of this stuff, except to be your building commissioner and let you know that I can enforce whatever we put in place. But what do we do about the issues that have come up with regards to the stretch code, and how do we address some of those concerns? Um, as far back as the fall of two thousand and seventeen, and several times since then, and I'm, I'm talking at least a dozen times, Manager Ls and I have discussed the Green Communities Program and the stretch code. During those instances, Manager Ls has told me about Barnstable's history with the Green Communities effort, and their decision, put energy con, con, um, conservation measures into effect, as David had, has talked about earlier, despite not being able to attain the Green Communities designation, in other words, Barnstable is, is leading the pack, um, with or without the Green Communities designation. At some point last year, Managers L, Manager Ls, and I'm, I, I don't wanna say a date, but I think it was in the fall, don't, don't quote me on that. Uh, Manager Ls asked me if I thought that since, um, adopting the stretch code has been problematic in Barnstable, was there another way to satisfy Criterion Five without adopting the stretch code? So I told him I'd look into that, and, and I came up with a process, and, and I didn't, the state came up with a process, and, um, and so what I know from past experience, and more now from research, is that there is a process under Mass General Law, chapter one forty-three, uh, section ninety-eight, that allows for amendments to our building code, local amendments, that, uh, don't necessarily need to be applied to the entire Commonwealth. So that process involves the completion of and submission of a document called the Massachusetts Building Code Code Amendment Proposal. This document is submitted to the Building Code Promulgating Authority, which is called the Board of Building Regulations and Standards. The submittal requires that the following information be provided. Date and contact information of the party proposing an amendment, identification of the code, and the addition that, that is, is being asked to be amended, the type of amendment, whether it's a new section in the code or a change of an existing section. Uh, text of both the existing and proposed code changes, they want an introduction, a rationale, cost of compliance to our citizens, and, uh, the benefits of the, uh, amendment, including life safety. Internally, I've been asked to provide details on exactly what code changes I propose to submit to the B B R S. While I have ideas of what I'd like to submit, or what we inspectors would like to submit, because our team is working on this, it's not just me. I've not done the research to fully develop a proposal, and have not written amendments, because I'm really not sure what direction this body wants to go in. In other words, it doesn't make sense for me to, uh, have our staff do, do a bunch of work, and it's a lot of work, um, to, to prep a code proposal, if my recommendation to seek an amendment is no, of no interest to the town council. Um, so I don't have specifics, and I won't have until I have some direction from you. Um, and even if I did, you'd be asleep in five minutes, uh, of code talk, because it's probably one of the most boring subjects I know. Um, but in any event, I'm happy to share, if you take up my recommendation, I'm happy to share all of that with you. But speaking in general terms, I'll describe the process that I've recommended to the town manager. Couple of quick notes first, there's, there is only one code promulgating authority in Massachusetts, and that's the Board of Building Regulations and Standards. I do not recommend writing a new Barnstable code, I see that as a non-starter. Secondly, we would, we would want, certainly from our, the inspector's point of view, um, input from the Massachusetts and local home builder, our, our home builders partners, to gain some consensus uh, on the technical aspects of any proposals we submit, because the things that we do are gonna affect because the things that we do are going to affect them. We know what we want to do for our citizens in terms of saving their money, making it easy for them, but we want to make sure that we don't discount our, our contractors, the people that we do business with on a daily basis. So, my recommendation is to propose amendments to the existing 2018 International Energy Compliance Code that would make it more energy efficient. The proposal would come in the form of two amendment proposals or submittals to the BBRS. The first one is for the commercial code, and the second one is for the residential code. These proposals would recommend that certain provisions of the 2018 code be amended to meet the standards of the 2021 Energy Code, and that they update automatically the next code change with each iteration. So, when the 2023 code comes out, it gets updated automatically. Some examples of things that, you know, you can, that we can propose and that we will propose, is an increase in the baseline, our values and you values. Everybody probably knows that insulation comes within our value, on our factor. And there's a baseline in both the residential and commercial codes for that. Penestration or doors and windows has what's called a U, a U-value. So, we would propose that, for example, that those baselines are increased. We would include requirements for new additions and certain alterations. So, for the most part right now, are the stretch code, and, and you may even hear that in a little bit from Lisa, it doesn't address, it, it doesn't require alterations and, and renovations and additions to comply. We think they probably should, and we have some ideas about that. Those provisions would be designed to make the code that we enforce more restrictive than the base code, and our hope is that, that would make it eligible for the Green Communities designation. We would also codify that the Town of Barnstable have its local inspectors trained and certified to be hers raiders, or alternatively, hire an energy code inspector in order to conduct the energy code inspections and testing that outside agencies are required to do under the stretch code. This would satisfy the mandatory code requirement of the lower door tests and other testing without the need for our citizens to hire a third-party agency or for passing those costs on to our property owners beyond our, our normal permitting fees. Finally, that our code amendments would sunset should the Commonwealth enact a mandatory net zero code. So, if somewhere down the line, and there's a lot of talk about a net zero code, if, if the, the community, or excuse me, the Commonwealth mandates, this would disappear. So, in terms of timing, because that's a, that's been a critical sticking point with this, there's a concern that these recommendations that I've made to Manager Ls will interfere with the town's ability to submit a new Green Communities application in time for this year's application process. We missed last year's, I understand the concern. My understanding has always been that code amendment hearings are conducted by the BBRS in November. I'm pleased to inform you that I've had discussions with our Chief of Inspections, Dan Walsh, up at the Commonwealth, and he's indicated that he could, that he may be able to place our proposal or proposed amendments on the May agenda. So, if the Town Council agrees with my recommendations to the Town Manager, I'll ensure that our proposed amendments, if we're allowed to proceed in that direction, are completed and submitted to the Commonwealth by April 30th in the hopes that we can be heard at the May 11th BBRS hearing. Is the BBRS going to agree with our amendments? I don't know. I, I really don't. That could go either way, just like when you go to a zoning board hearing, or you go to a planning board hearing, or historic district hearing, it could go either way. What I do know for sure is that we will fail 100% of the attempts that we don't take. So, my recommendation to the manager was that we give this a shot, and if it fails, then it'll be up to this Town Council to decide where to go from there. If we're successful, I think that we can get our designation, and we'll have done a good turn for our citizens. So, from here, I'll turn the discussion back over to Director Anthony, and he can introduce our next panel member.
Thank you, Brian. I think the format here is that we are going to kind of do questions and answers in open discussion after we've heard from some of our other presenters to make sure that we kind of hear all sides before we start to ask questions. Therefore, I'm going to invite Lisa and Will. I'm not sure how they want to approach kind of bringing forward their discussion on Green Communities designation and also their perspective on the stretch code issue. But at this point in time, through you, Mr. President, I'd like to invite Lisa and Will to present.
That'd be great. Thank you, and again, thank you, Lisa and Will, for being with us. Thank you. This point, so, without further ado, thank you.
No, I'm going to start, just because I'm your regional coordinator for the Green Communities Program, and I definitely agree that Barnstable has been leading by example for some time. You've made amazing efforts. I don't, if, if Brian and the town wants to seek this alternative compliance through the BBRS, we're not discouraging you from, from doing that by any means. We've had, I've attended another meeting of the Town Council, and we've had discussions with Ian Finlayson from D O E R and Brian Florence going back to last August, where we even offered, you know, Ian Finlayson offered to review proposed amendments, but they went to the BBRS. We haven't seen any of these such proposals that have been suggested to the BBRS be adopted in the past. They have a couple of requirements, it's my understanding. BBRS is the, the person, the board that would be approving it, and you have to prove that your, your town is unlike any other town, is unique, and that you're different from the other communities, and that these special provisions would be needed. And, let me see, you would need to, if the community has to show evidence that the alternative method would minimize life cycle energy costs for all new construction, and it's enforceable. So, those are the two things that I'm aware of, and Barnstable would have to do that. There are 280 green communities. We just had nine communities apply in December, and we're anticipating a formal announcement soon. One of those is, Felmath is, is expected to be amongst those. And we have 287 communities out of the 351 have already adopted the stretch code. We have another, I would say up to 15, that are considering the stretch code at spring and fall town meetings this year. So, this is something that's ongoing in our community, and D O E R would certainly welcome an application from Barnstable in 2021 between July 1st and December 30th. So, if you do get to go before the BBRS in May, as you plan, that would give you plenty of time to think about the stretch code, because you have a council form of government. If you're not able to get this through the BBRS, you would have plenty of time to this through readings and a vote of your, of your Town Council. So, the opportunity is there, it's yours for the taking. The decision is in the hands of the counselors, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about the stretch code. Will is our code expert for D O E R. He comes out with me, and he answers questions about cost and, you know, technical questions. I stay away from that stuff, and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about that, and then we can take two and eight.
Would you like to add something? Just, just so, I just want to reiterate too, we're a little bit limited on time, so. But I do appreciate you being here, and absolutely, if you want to add something, please do.
Yeah, I mean, I could just add, I'll be quick about it. So, I've been in the trades now for 20, 20 years or so. Outside of my day job, I own 20 rental units, where I practice what I preach here. I basically install the systems that, that are out there, high-end systems. We go through the process. We get the big rebates, because we're doing good stuff. And yeah, I have low turnover, the cost. I mean, I, you know, I can get into details at a later time with others, but I encourage people to go on your favorite search engine and look up some stuff. You can go to Marvin Windows, see what, you know, you'd be looking at. When people kind of discuss cost and all this stuff, I mean, I'm sure people on the Cape building brand-new homes are really thinking about, do they want aluminum clad? Or do they want wood windows instead of the vinyl? You know, I, I, I would love to move to the Cape. If I had to, I'd be getting an existing home. I'm probably not building a brand-new home on the Cape, you know, cost-wise. So, I really think the cost issue is, is minimal, and take a look at the slides that we've provided. When you look at the cost, if you don't agree exactly with the numbers exactly, take a look at the percentage of what the fraction is for the total construction cost of that budget. It really is minor in the grand scheme of things, and the savings back to the homeowner over time is greatly worth the investment. So, that's it for now. Yeah, I mean, I'll try to take some questions and see what I can do.
Excellent. Thank you. I think that there's a resource, a resource available, and the whole point of this workshop was to also bring in a building perspective of someone that the town is very familiar with, Rob Brennan, lives in town, has done work in town, and understands the Cape. And we really wanted to bring somebody from the other side of the table who could potentially be a resource to any of you who had questions, because he has had to kind of walk the walk and, and live the, live the rules here. So, through you, Mr. President, I'd like to invite Rob Brennan to say a few words and kind of set the table from where he is.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, David, for that introduction. And, and one thing I just wanted to lead with, and I, it hasn't been mentioned yet, I thought it would be. So, maybe I'm the one that'll be breaking the news, but having this discussion today is, is very auspicious. Today, just hours ago, actually, the Massachusetts House of Representatives just followed, you know, the action taken by the State Senate earlier this week, and actually passed with, you know, some amendments that were proposed by the governor, but passed, you know, the new climate bill, which, you know, I understand is going to be signed by the governor, you know, sometime next week. And that will actually be ushering in the new, you know, code that D O E R, you know, will be, will be drafting over the next 18 months. And that is, you know, the net zero code. So, I think, you know, perhaps, you know, by coincidence, but certainly with significance, that we're having this discussion, you know, today. And, you know, David mentioned the table, and I think the table here, you know, really is a, it's a round table, that there is no, you know, one side, you know, or the other on. You know, and certainly not with, you know, with regard to the perspectives that I, you know, come at this issue with. And, you know, just for a little bit of additional background for those, you know, that don't know some of the, the involvement that I have, you know, in and around, you know, this issue. And, and, you know, all this informs, you know, why I believe, you know, that Barnstable can lead, you know, in both climate policy as, as we have, you know, and in attainable housing production as we need to. So, you know, my comments today, you know, are involved, informed by, you know, 20 years of practice as an environmental and land use attorney. I serve on the Board of Directors currently for the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative. I also serve on the Barnstable County Economic Development Council, the Town of Barnstable Economic Development Task Force. I'm a state director for the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Massachusetts, where I also chair the association's Government Affairs Committee. As Dave mentioned, I'm president of the Cape Build Companies, building workforce housing, you know, here in Barnstable, in Hyannis. But I'm, I'm not here, you know, representing any one of those organizations today. I'm here, you know, simply as a, as a resident of recent five, but as an individual, you know, who is both pro-climate and pro-housing. You know, and in particular, for the past 11 years, you know, working here as a, as a developer and, and living and, and, you know, participating in the community as, as one who believes in, you know, climate policy, who, you know, who adopts and, and, you know, as Will said, you know, walks the walk in the, in the projects that we build. You know, I have become intimately, you know, familiar with the importance of both climate policy to Barnstable and to Cape Cod in general, but also, you know, the need, the desperate need for attainable housing across a broad spectrum here, and, and the need for, you know, for doing all that we can to advance that. You know, but with that experience, has also, you know, come some, some harsh truths that, you know, that Brian Florence mentioned in his comments. The reality here, you know, on Cape Cod, in Barnstable, is that it costs more to produce housing. But we're also kind of whipsawed in that, in addition to costing more as a result of higher labor costs, higher materials costs, the rents to support new housing projects, particularly those that are needed most in workforce, you know, and affordable housing. Those workforce rents on the Cape are set largely by, by hospitality and tourism and, and service job. And we don't have a rental population, you know, a large rental population that's making the financial services salaries, that are making the biotech salaries, which are commonly, you know, what is, is fueling new rental housing production on the other, you know, side of the bridge. Those realities, you know, particularly with regard to materials, have only become, you know, more heightened this past year, you know, as, as many of you know. You know, housing futures, or excuse me, lumber futures, you know, were up over $1,000 per thousand linear feet. And today, you know, it stands at $852, where just a year ago today, it was at $303. So, the reality is, is that, you know, the current state of housing production on the Cape is that, you know, we, we started out where, where margins are often, you know, very thin. And I, you know, I, I sit on, you know, on these boards and, and was speaking, you know, this afternoon, you know, with Lisa Magnata, who I know is watching. And those same concerns, you know, that are, that are shared by private developers are also shared by Hack. And, and, you know, Lisa shared with me that a project that Hack is, is moving forward with in Harwich, the costs on that have escalated over $1 million above, you know, what had been budgeted as a result of, again, escalating labor costs and and escalating materials costs. And the reality is that there are many other projects, projects that I've looked at, projects that Hack has looked at, projects that, that developers of all sizes and stripes have looked at, that simply don't pencil out. Can't get the numbers to work. The costs are too high, the income, you know, is too low. So, you know, given that reality, you know, it, it's a fundamental truth that any movement in, in the code that carries with it, you know, increased performance, increased materials, and increased costs, you know, are going to impact projects. And when they can, you know, they will be passed down. When projects do pencil out, those costs get passed down onto renters, you know, and onto buyers. Now, those increased costs are not a reason to forego taking steps forward on climate policy, including a move, you know, toward net zero. But, you know, they, they are a reason that in making those moves, you know, we have to understand what those cost impacts are going to be, and correspondingly, you know, what those cost impacts are going to mean for housing affordability. And, you know, I'm, I'm familiar with, you know, with the Green Communities Program. I'm familiar, you know, with, I haven't seen the slides, but I've, I've looked at in the past and recently the Green Communities, you know, cash flow analysis, which is a useful tool, you know, for some communities. For the Cape, you know, this inquiry really needs to be Cape-specific, because the costs of a project in Worcester, you know, done perhaps in 2017, are not the cost of housing production, you know, on the Cape today. And, you know, when we move those numbers, when costs of, of like starter home, you know, and, and home, you know, purchases move, those move with consequences. And I supplied Counselor Steinheber with a, a report that came out just last month, done by the National Association of Home Builders. It looked at what the median costs are of housing in, in the state, looked at how many families, you know, could afford that median cost of housing based on, you know, the need for an income of $137,000 to afford the median housing, you know, price of. to afford the median housing, you know, price of six hundred and six thousand. And it concluded that every time the housing, uh, housing production goes up by a thousand dollars, you know, from that median, there are 2,093 families that, uh, for whom median housing becomes unaffordable and unattainable. So I think, you know, the, the opportunity, you know, before us, again, standing here, you know, at the dawn of, of the net zero code in, in Massachusetts is for Barnstable that perhaps I think feels, you know, the, the impacts of housing attainability and need for workforce housing and the importance of climate change, you know, more acutely than any other, uh, community, you know, in the Commonwealth is rather than being the last in the door, you know, on, um, you know, the stretch code, being first in the door and taking a leadership position with regard to the new net zero code. And I think it's also an opportunity for Barnstable to continue acting more boldly and not just meeting minimum performance standards, but looking at all the additional ways that we can continue to lead in reducing carbon footprint. And, and one of the biggest, and I'm, I'm sure, you know, something that Lisa and Will would acknowledge as well, is, you know, by concentrating more new development in proximity to our activity center, allowing folks, you know, to, to have use of a car as an option.
If we could just wrap it up, I'm sorry, I just, I just want to go two paws.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. So, you know, again, specifically, you know, with regard to the code, my, you know, my belief is new, uh, the new net zero code is on the horizon. In order to not have housing production and climate policy be on opposing vectors, we need to understand, you know, what the cost of compliance in Barnstable will be. And when we understand the costs, you know, that becomes again, the opportunity to lead by advocating with the state for policies that will offset, you know, costs. We have a, the solar production is a, is a wonderful example. That succeeded between 2007 and 2017 because there were financial components that went along with that. Currently, nothing is on the books for net zero, but I think it just creates the opportunity, you know, for Barnstable, you know, to take stock of what those costs would be and to, you know, to lead and propose ideas through our legislation or through our legislators into the administration and the legislature to make that, the, the policies set up for better success so that the financial impacts were mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Anthony.
So I think what we have before you this evening, councillors, is an opportunity to talk openly with some people and with each other about some thoughts on this issue. We do not have a specific vote teed up at this time because there are going to be different levels of understanding. And as, as, as Rob just hinted at, there are things happening as recently as this afternoon that may impact where we move forward. Certainly, the information about being able to get before the B B R S in May is an update from even March 4th, when we thought that we were looking at November, which was going to call into question how rapidly we needed to submit an application in December. So I think just in the context of the presentation tonight, we've seen some changes and how we can start to digest and move forward with this. It is important to note that there are two important elements that have nothing to do with stretch code that will come back before the town council for endorsement. That will be the energy reduction plan and that will be the green vehicle policy. And what it means is that this Green Communities process is not going to go away. It is going to be in front of you over the next few months. We are not able to even make an application until after July 1st. So there's going to be some opportunities for additional questions on both criteria in five, but also on three and four as we move forward. So I saw several people had their hands up in between or at the end of presentations. And for you, Council President, I'm not sure how you want to address those questions. Or should I just turn it over to you and they can call on the particular people who present?
Yeah, what I'll do is, uh, thank you, Director Anthony, first of all, and thank you for everybody's input in regards to that. Of course, I know the time of night as well, and I appreciate your time. And town councils can expect to do something like this, but not necessarily that way. So I do ask that the, the town councils would be mindful of that. And also, um, but what I'll do is I'll just, like I normally do, raise your hand and then you can address whomever you'd like to have ask a question to, to see if that, hopefully that will work. Councillor Atslas.
So, uh, Mr. Brennan, I thank you, uh, Mr. President, Mr. Brennan. So I guess for me, um, yeah, and to steal a line from a movie, play it to me like I'm a six-year-old. Do you see the stretch code as prohibitive to the efforts of new construction on Cape Cod, given how unique it is? I just, you know, your, your presentation was, was great, but I just, I'm, I just need to, I, I'm just asking that direct question if there's a direct answer to that.
Yeah, so I think it, I think it's a question of, you know, of what the cost of, of compliance is, right? And it's not without costs. I mean, and, and again, you know, from that study, you know, when the cost of, of housing moves, uh, of purchasing, you know, moves a thousand dollars, you know, statewide, 2,093 families, you know, it becomes unattainable. So I don't think, as I said, I, I don't think it's without costs. And I think the costs of compliance, you know, in Barnstable are unique to Barnstable. And a first step, you know, whether it's for the purposes of, of the stretch code or whether it's for, you know, the bigger swing of, of net zero, that understanding and quantifying those costs and understanding their impact on housing is a necessary first step.
Thank you.
Councillor Star.
Thank you, President Levesque. So in, in, in response to Mr. Atslas, um, if there's a cost, we, we already know that, um, most affordable housing units that have come in front of us have, are not, um, you can't build them now anyway. You can't build them without some kind of subsidy tax break. We've helped a lot of them over the finish. If you're building a, um, you know, an eight hundred thousand dollar house, the twenty-two hundred dollars it costs to, to do that, you know, to reach compliance isn't, isn't that much. I've talked to builders who've told me that. So, I mean, we, we do, there's sort of a disparity. I mean, most of the units, since I've been on the council, we, we basically only talked about rental units. We're not talking about people buying condos. Nobody's building condos. You know, and I would like to see us think about that as, as, I think this time goes down the road. So, um, it costs money, but in the life cycle of the house, the owner saves in, um, energy costs that last for 40 or 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Star. Councillor Clark.
Question, there's been a reference to slides. Are these the slides that were presented at a previous meeting?
If I can, if I can answer that question, sir. Lisa Sullivan and Will sent me a very thorough, uh, set of slides that talked about a number of topics to kind of cover all of the bases associated with this presentation. And it, it is, it is filled with lots of information, but it really kind of touched upon a number of things that were outside what we were trying to do, which was to create an environment where people could pose questions. We can certainly make that slide deck available. There is some information that is on that, but what we tried to do here tonight was create a forum where people could have discussion as opposed to having a whole bunch of presentations, um, done by slides. And I think if we had done that, we probably would have needed at least another hour. And, and having gone through that deck of slides from Lisa and Will, there is some good value in it. And certainly we can send it around after maybe.
There, there is a location on the website, presentation, it dropped there.
Excellent. Councillor Heber, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I, I don't know if anybody else agrees with this, but I feel like we've gone around in a big circle for a long time. We have absolute faith in Commissioner Florence's approach. He is, has talked tonight with very, very clear that the use of amendments, present them, see if they'll be acceptable. We know that the net zero is coming, whether we like it or not, whether we want to get ourselves out of a hole. We, we are on the brink of climate disaster. Nobody can argue that. So I don't know why we're having a difficult time with this. I thought that there was a general feeling that we supported Commissioner Florence's approach last year. I thought that by November, um, we were very clear, I believe, that Commissioner Florence was going to submit his proposal without approval. Worst case scenario was if they denied it, then we would, um, at the most, uh, vote for the stretch code as it exists. But I think that Commissioner Florence, uh, has made a great presentation and a great argument for his approach. And I applaud his approach. And I, I would like us to really support that. And if, if the commissioner can get that in by, um, the end of March, April, for them to look at over in May, going to be a yes or no. But again, we didn't get to be a leading organization, a leading town on energy by going around in circles. And so I think we have to take a risk and take the chance, but I don't think it's a big risk or a chance. Commissioner Florence has made a great argument and I think we should support it. And we're going to get zero net whether we want it or not. But I think if we care about our future and our environment, and I, I agree with all the, uh, the cost factors and everything else. But I think, um, Councillor Star has made a great effort to get us to move on this. I'm hoping that my fellow councillors will, will agree for us to unanimously support Commissioner Florence's approach. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Councillor Heber. And, you know, I think that's a great point, you know, meaning that, um, here we are. Of course, it's just took a little bit of homework to figure out exactly how this amendment is going to be approached. Again, how long it would take to get those. We also have heard from Director Anthony that some things to catch up, we have to do in the category. So again, this was just, you know, not an necessary argument in regards to stretch code, but just, uh, you know, again, we'll listen to our esteemed, uh, building commissioner, as Director Anthony had mentioned. And quote him, I should say. And, you know, and so, so I appreciate your comments there. And I agree with, you know, continuing to support, you know, what Commissioner Florence is talking about in regards, and, you know, and get us, yeah, get where, where, trying to get towards that finish line for the Green Communities for the best approach for the town of Barnes. Any other comments? Councillor Shonsey.
Thank you, President Levesque, and thank you everyone for being here tonight. And I apologize for the late hour. I do want to highlight the fact that Rob brought to our attention a change that took place in the legislature today. And also a remark that he said of, do we want to be the last in the door on the Green Communities Act? Or do we want to be the first in the door in net zero? And, you know, truth be told, we are last in the door, right? I mean, we're really, in terms of our level of progressiveness in all areas, green in terms of Massachusetts, which in terms of the country is incredibly green. You know, that made an impression on me in terms of, I do want to continue to lead the way. And I don't want to be the last in the door. Fully support Commissioner Florence's plan, um, until of course, hearing this latest news this evening. One thing I do want to take issue with, or I at least want to challenge, I spoke with six different contractors, um, following our last meeting where we had a discussion on this. And with regard to, I believe at the time, we were told the figure increased cost of this construction was two to three thousand. I think tonight we heard twenty-two hundred. Not a single contractor I talked to agree with that thing. Every single one of them said it was closer to three to six percent of the build costs was ultimately the cost of meeting stretch. Well, I would love for you to address that, but I'm just saying, I, I'm dealing with a discrepancy between what the representative for the Green Communities Act presented and what I've heard tonight and what I heard from people in the field. So I'm curious about that, but I do think, I'm as green as they come. I, I do think at this late stage and with the fact that we have other criteria we also have to comply with in addition to this one, maybe we do pump the brakes and wait to go be the first in on net zero. So anyways, please, Will, I would love to hear from you.
Sure, so three percent of a budget, so let's even just start with $400,000. That'll be 12 grand. So I think those contractors may not have their math all there, speaking as a contractor as well. When, I know that the folks on the, on the call are not getting a chance to see the slides, but there are strategies where there's going to be an actual positive cost. If you build an all-electric home on the Cape, it's cheaper. And I, I understand that lumber costs are up, but there's no lumber discrepancy. When you guys, when you have a chance to see the slide, lumber is a factor here. You're going to pay the same for a base house versus stretch house. There's no change. You're not, you're not building a bigger wall, you don't have to. So, you know, those costs, I could even make arguments where you could do it cheaper because you could do a two-by-four construction or two-by-six construction with 24-inch center and use less lumber. Like, there's strategies there, but I think when you talk contractors, you know, they're going to, they're going to come up with whatever figures. You got to look at like a G C, you can't look at like a specific sub, a framing sub, or whatever it might be. You got to look at kind of like the whole picture there. One last thing to kind of note on that, like, cost piece is that the builders that are building in that area, they're building, they're going to be building in Yarmouth. They're going to be building kind of elsewhere. They don't just build in Barnstable, so like, they're used to those costs. I got on my squash medal, put you right now, the Bill Potter does a lot of low-income work on Martha's Vineyard. All the low-income builders, they, they do this without a problem. So I just want to put that out there, but yeah, I think three to six percent, that, that's 12,000, that's, you know, sixteen thousand dollars that they're talking about, that just can't be the case. I did the ratings for years and if I ever charged that, I'd get kicked off the site in two seconds.
If I may, Will, I, I don't know that they were referring to the three percent, three to six percent as the cost of bringing in the Harrison inspector. I think they were referring to the three to six percent cost also in terms of modifications they might have to make after the inspector's been there, now having to reschedule that second time with the inspector. I also heard having to go back and correct problems because we now have a structure that is so airtight, it doesn't breathe at all, and we now have, you know, circulation and thermodynamic and issues with mold. So I, I think maybe they were referring to sort of all the ancillary costs as a result as well.
Right, so if we had a chance to present the slides.
Hold on one sec. Devolve into the debate, you know what I mean? I just want to, and then again, I don't, I, I appreciate everybody's effort here and different things. I just want to be mindful that, um, you know, that's, you know, it's unfortunate at this point, it's kind of hearsay. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Right, I just want to let Will know, no one's alleging he charges that much.
And, and I appreciate what you're doing, Will, you know what I mean? Like 100%, I just, I don't want to, you know, um, devolve into, uh, you know, and again, you know, you know, what will happen next is, well, you don't, you know, what it's going to cost to build on Cape Cod. And then honestly, some of these builders, I, 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 I think that I probably talked to the same ones, the Councillors Johnson, he had, they're not subcontract. Very live, um, prominent builders, you know, I think, so I, I just don't want it to get anymore. It comes to Shonsey, do you have any more follow-up?
No, thank you, Will, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Councillor Steinheber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, uh, kind of talking past a few things here, it keeps going back to single-family home. But I, I think really the big concern is the multifamily developments that we have that are going to be the things that solve our housing crisis. So really drill into some of those financials and some of those, I mean, you can get to a $10 million build out pretty fast. When I talk to some of the bigger developers, yeah, Councillor Shonsey's right. You know, they'll say all-in, you know, four or five percent extra to the cost of a project. So if you're looking at a $10 million project, you know, another four or five hundred thousand dollars is significant. It can't be dismissed so easily. And that's something that is of concern. You know, me, I, I'm definitely doing what I can to push housing production on the Cape because we're in a, in a crisis with that. But I also want to balance it with, um, you know, good stewardship and energy conservation policies, which we've done. And we have a legacy of doing even before any of us were ever on the council. Many ways, we do things far and above what any community that has, you know, the label of Green Communities. And I think really what's important is, is, is the, is the output, what, what you're doing. It's not what you're called. You know, we're not looking to get a gold star, we're looking to actually. You know, we're not looking to get a gold star. We're looking to actually have things that are real and tangible that we can point to. And, you know, I agree with Council Hebert. I think, you know, we definitely should give Commissioner Florence an opportunity with his expertise to craft this and see if we can move forward. Again, it's a little bit like Chapter H with the Cape Cod Commission. A lot of folks have told us, well, no one's ever done this and, you know, it won't happen. Well, it did happen, and the staff pulled that together, and that was a great thing that we did. And with the legislation changing up of the state, I got to admit, talking about the green communities feels a little bit like talking about whether or not we should open up a blockbuster video because it's kind of dating itself by the hour, if you will. And we're kind of moving into a new realm of energy code. So it's becoming a bit of a relic. But I definitely support Commissioner Florence, and I think that's a reasonable approach, and hopefully we can all get behind that. Thank you.
Very good. Council Scott.
Just a couple of things. I think the whole talk about the Net Zero code is a complete diversion from what we should be talking about. It's at least two years down the road, eighteen months down the road. And I don't think when it's, when it's first instituted, it's going to be optional. So, and so would everybody here vote for a Net Zero building code? That would be my question. So I think we need to keep focused on what we can do today. We've done a lot. I wouldn't say that we've done more than any other community. I don't, I don't have any, any numbers to back that up. We put in a lot of photovoltaic cells, and we did that years ago. I think we need to keep working. So I think we should keep moving this question forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Scott. Any other comment? Council Bogan.
Yeah, very briefly, I endorse Counselor Hebert's suggestion. I'm firmly behind allowing Brian. I'm influenced by, I don't know if I'll return a phrase, but it was something to the effect of, we can't fail if we don't try. So I'm willing to take that, that approach for the time being and see if we're successful. If not, we're no worse off than we are right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Council Bogan. Council Hebert, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I think both Counselor Steinheiner and Counselor Bogan really, you know, I think we're going down the right way. I don't think even Net Zero, and now due respect to Council Star, it's not a diversion. If the state's putting that out, and we have to as civilization moves towards protecting our environment and builds right. And so again, I'm going to reiterate that I have full confidence in Commissioner Florence. He has nothing to gain but his excellence and his service to our town. And I believe that he will put forth these amendments that will get us to where we want to be. And again, if we don't try, we will never know. So please, I think we need to move this forward and keep going. Thank you.
Council Neary, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just with time as pressing on us here. With Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Derigo? Derigo?
Derigo, you're close.
Sorry to butcher that.
It's all right.
It's awful. These slides are, could you please provide us maybe with some contact information, both of you, just so that as the council, as we have questions that we can reach out to you as, as things, things progress? I think shared knowledge of, lack of a better word, both sides of the equation would be beneficial to all of us. That would just be my one request.
Absolutely, yeah. If I can, however you need to distribute it, I think Lisa, you might have it or I've already had contact, so you can get that around.
Thank you.
I'll make sure to get to the town manager's office and the town manager for distribution.
Thank you very much.
On it. My contact information is on everything. You're welcome to reach out to me anytime, any of you.
Council Scott.
Just one, two more points. What is the, so the process, maybe I'm not sure, Mr. Florence. At some point, we have to prove that we have a unique situation that makes the town of Barnstable different than the other three hundred and fifty towns in the Commonwealth. Is that, is that the first piece of the process before you write the code? Before you write your amendments?
So that's the language in the general law. So if you look at Mass General Law, one forty, chapter one forty-three, section ninety-eight, it talks about just that. So the language that Ms. Sullivan used, she paraphrased it, but she pulled it directly from the legislation.
So the answer is yes. You have to prove that we're unique. Is that, are you going to do that before you write your amendments?
I'm going to, I'm going to prove it in the amendment.
In the amendment.
In the application for the BBRS, yeah.
Okay. And just, just one other comment that Mr. Hebert brought up, and maybe Miss Rep Crisetti remembers this. But back in November, the town manager instructed Mr. Florence to move forward with his process, and nothing's happened. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Well, I feel badly that you feel that way because today is part of that process. This meeting is part of that process.
I, just in a discussion, just response to that, I believe it was brought up on the Council Hebert leadership. It was Council Bogan had even mentioned it in December, that we'd really like to see a workshop, I believe it was. And again, anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. And then I think at that point, there might have been a little bit of a pause just to get to this point. And then remember Town Manager Ls, I were discussing openly in this meeting, that we would do this second week of March. So here we are. So to have, and then it gives us a time to get a feel for the room in regards to where I want to go. I'm kind of hearing that there's a lot of support to let, allow, you know, again, we're not here to vote, but we just, you know, get a feel for the Town Manager Ls, who is, I believe endorsing, you know, he's not here, he's on vacation. I don't know what words is involved, and Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn, correct me if I'm wrong. But there's an endorsement here to allow, again, Commissioner Florence to try to get us over the finish line and go with that. So and then once we get to that point, yay and a, and then we can readdress it at that point in time. Commissioner Florence, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. President, you're a hundred percent right. So we had that discussion, and Manager Ls was instructing me to move forward. And, and the town council voted to have a workshop to bring in the people that are here today. So this, today is the antithesis, or excuse me, the culmination of moving forward. And Manager, Assistant Manager Clyburn had his hand up, I think, before me, so I apologize for jumping in.
Good. Very good. You know, again, I don't, I know we're probably going to go over eleven o'clock tonight. Just want to be mindful that if anybody just has any questions, though, please, you know, let's appreciate you to our panel. Council Clark?
I'll be brief. If I may, through you, ask Director Florence, will these amendments, should they be accepted? Trigger the grants that apparently come with the communities' tweet?
Mr. President, through you, Council Clark, that is the intent, and that's the purpose for what we're doing.
Great question.
Whether we're successful or not, I just don't know.
Council Rep Crisetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the panel for coming tonight. I believe Barnstable is unique. We'll be able to prove through you, Mr. Florence, that not only have we pledged energy reduction for many years and been a leader for many years, but we've received thousands of dollars in grants towards that cause. So I think with all of that, we're in a good stead to, you know, be accepted in this, in this endeavor to not circumvent the green communities, but to kind of lead, lead the charge with our, with our own amendments to the building code for our community. It will, it would certainly benefit, I think, all the council to know how much we have saved in energy costs with the solar arrays that have been put around town. So that, I'm sure that's a number that can be put, put, put out pretty quickly. And I don't know, I think, I think Counselor Starr, you know, mentioned the fact that, you know, you thought that Mr. Florence should have been doing this months ago. Well, I agree, this was supposed to be a workshop that kind of brought it all to a head. But I think from now, now I think Mr. Florence has got the, the green light, as far as I'm concerned, to do what he's supposed to be doing and writing those amendments and submitting them on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rep Crisetti. Town Manager Andy Clyburn.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Counselor Starr's comment, fully commissioned, directed by this office. He was directed, and this office is pleased with his progress to date. We have had meetings. He has not been doing nothing. We're ready to move forward, and we're fully confident, Commissioner Florence, to meet the timeline and bring this forward.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that. Also too, just wanted to mention too, I've had some conversation, and it was mentioned when Director Christie Sartori of the Cape Cod Commission was here giving her update that there's a climate impact study that's going to be coming out that, you know, that they've worked really hard on. It's had a lot of input from different stakeholders throughout Cape Cod, obviously, in the islands. And I'm really looking forward to that study being released. And I did reach out to her and try to get some input in regards to that. And so that, that will be coming out, and of course, you know, they have, and those resources, again, I think you're getting them from, you know, I think they're going to really try to do a good job of trying to get input, you know, both sides of the developers, whatever it might be. So, you know, again, we're all concerned about climate change reality, and we're going to have to obviously address this at some point. So not only in building, but these other aspects that we talked about. So there's going to be improvement in those areas. So if there's no further comment, oh, okay, Council Clark.
Do we need a motion?
No, we don't. Oh, I kind of, you know, again, it's just a kind of a shropple, I guess you could say. But it's, I think there's a resounding support. Haven't heard necessarily from everybody, but I think there's a majority of support where we want to move forward from that. You know, obviously, leadership will converse in regards to that, when the Ls get back to town. And then we'll move forward and report back to the council what we're going to be doing in our next meeting. That sounds like a good plan. But Council Axles.
I'm just going to say I support Mr. Florence continuing the process and getting it over the goal line.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So here we are. So I appreciate everybody being here. I know what time it is, and we didn't have to do it, so I really appreciate that. Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Derigo. You know, I actually would maybe reach out to Mr. Derigo. I'd love to see some of the work that he's doing and stuff like that. You guys, fascinating, so, and you have a conversation very engaging. So, Mr. Brennan, obviously appreciate you being here. You know, again, this was a great exercise in just kind of getting it out there and getting a feel for what, where we're going and what a workshop is supposed to do, the purpose of the workshop. So again, thank you, everybody, for being here, and we're going to move on to the orders of the day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Thank you, Director, Commissioner Florence, everybody involved. Thank you enough.
Thank you all for your time.
Bye-bye.
Okay, here we are. Orders of the day. So I did mention that we're going to take some things out of order. And if I could have Vice President Schnep, you could read into the record, item number twenty-twenty-one dash one-three-three, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to read in item twenty-twenty dash one-three-three. It's an item of new business, may be acted upon by a roll call majority vote. It is item twenty-twenty dash one-three-three, resolve to proclaim March as Women's History Month. And I would like some of my and for the rationale, I would like to invite my district or councilors to help me read the rationale as written.
With pleasure, whereas twenty-twenty-one marks the fortieth anniversary of the United States Congressional Public Laws ninety-seven dash twenty-eight and one hundred dash nine, leading to the establishment of March as Women's History Month, recognizing the vital role of women in American history.
Whereas women found our nation in helpless, recorded, unreported ways. We who advocate courage and passion for our highest ideals, strengthening the fabric of our nation, leading us towards more perfection.
Whereas we honor indigenous, enslaved, and immigrant women of all races, backgrounds, identities, colors, and creed for their courageous work to end oppression and birth opportunities for parity.
Whereas we recognize the historic and the everyday contributions and achievements of women throughout the workplace across local, state, and federal public service roles, serving in our military branches within nonprofit and faith organizations as the engines of change and social movements at the heart of our homes and at the heart of our communities across the Cape and Islands.
And whereas we acknowledge this enduring legacy of our nation's women as we celebrate the diversity of their backgrounds, identities, talents, accomplishments, and gifts which expand our democracy and power, our prosperity.
Now therefore, be it resolved by the Barnstable Town Council that March is hereby proclaimed as Women's History Month, and all are called upon to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Additionally, all are invited to learn more about the generation of women who have helped shape our nation's yielding a brighter future for all at www.women'shistorymonth.co.
Very good. Hey. Any council discussion? I think you just dropped the mic, you know, just like one of those things. I think that's what just happened there, so.
Just a quick observation, I think it was about a year, hey, last March, we had a proclamation, Girl Scouts.
Yes.
Nice bookend there.
Yes.
Right. I remember that. That was great.
Yep. Council Cullen.
I just wanted to thank Vice President Schnep for putting it all together and giving us our parts. And I'm glad I'm scripted and didn't have to memorize it, but it was a great effort, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, recognized. Yes, applause to Council, I should say, Vice President Schnep for.
So, and I, and I have to extend my thanks to the women who asked me to do this. So it's a group effort, for sure.
Okay, is there more to council discussion? I would move to a vote, please.
Okay. Councilors. What? Yes. Cullen. Aguan.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert. Going to stand to say yes. Levesque.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. I'm sorry, Mary, I forgot you.
Yes.
Thank you. Shonsey.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheiner.
Yes.
Axolus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Very good. Excellent, yes, round of applause. We're at the dais, we would have given a standing ovation for sure. Thank you again, everybody involved in that. And if you are tuning in and you stay with us all that time, I really appreciate it. Did try to move it up as much as possible. I appreciate you staying with us.
Mr. President, I think you might get an email or something from
Mr. President, I think you might get a, an email or something from, um, Mrs. Roback on that. She's the, I think.
I know. She probably thought we were gonna do it a lot sooner than what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Matt, no song.
No song.
You're not gonna sing something?
I'd love to. Yeah, I honestly, I, yeah, anyway, it's getting late, you know?
Ten fifty-two. Do we need to take a vote?
Um, you, I was.
We're close.
One more thing in, but we should probably do that just in case. So let's, um, let's, let's, uh, I, I move to, um, extend the time past eleven o'clock. We take a vote back. So, um. Thank you. And why don't we do a little common voting, please?
Okay. Counselors, Column.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yeah.
Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark. Well, that's unanimous.
Okay, moving on. I'm still gonna work backwards here. I'm actually gonna take, uh, item number, uh, two zero two one dash one three two out of order as well. And, uh, Council Stein Hilber, if you could read on the right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you said item one three two?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Eight fifty-four.
Yep. Uh, item twenty twenty-one dash one three two, transfer order in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Public Works Department operating its expense budget. The purpose of funding hydro geological consulting services for various projects as written.
Second.
Great. You have the right to Dan Santos with us. Give us a question.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening again. Uh, due to vacancies in salary positions throughout the fiscal year in the Department of Public Work, the department currently has approximately two hundred forty thousand of unencumbered salary funds. Department proposes to access a portion of the projected savings to fund continuing hydro geological work for various town projects, including the comprehensive wastewater management plan, Hyannis Water System, water pollution control facility, and lake park evaluation. The request, if approved, will reduce the estimated amount of unexpended fiscal year twenty twenty-one appropriations that would be turned back to the general fund at the close of the fiscal year and become part of the town's free cash. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Any questions? Not seeing any. We'll move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And, um, Council, Jessica Rap Crisetti, if I could please have you read item number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight three.
Yes, Mr. President. This is, uh, new business. First reading referred to a second reading on four one twenty twenty-one. Item twenty twenty-one zero eight three, appointments for board committee or commission resolved at the town council appointments following individuals to a multiple member board committee or commission for airport commission, Joe DeGeorge, the regular member to a term expiring six twenty-three. Council on Aging, Lori Case is a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-two. And Priscilla La Liberty as a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-three. Housing Committee, Megan Moore, as a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-one. Human Services Committee, Megan Moore, is a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-two. Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, Jack Kay as a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-one. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Dr. Paul Kenneth, is a regular member to a term expiring six twenty-three. And finally, Youth Commission, Caleb Levesque, as a student member to a term expiring six twenty-two, as read.
Second.
Second.
But, um, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the rules and vote on this item tonight.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Very good. Any council discussion on that?
Well, um, if I may, um, it's been brought to the attention of the Appointments Committee that, um, several of the committees, especially Council on Aging, Human Services, and, um, the Hyannis Main Street, um, is in need of, um, the form, the meat form. And I know a couple of these people, uh, were interviewed at our previous meeting and haven't been put on until this agenda. So, um, we'd like to waive the rules to get them seated soon as possible.
Very good. Any other council discussion? Okay. We'll call majority vote, please.
And this is a vote to waive the rule?
This is a vote to waive the rules. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Counselors Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
The waive the rule is, if passed, thank you.
Thank you. If there's not further discussion, um, I would move to vote the, um, the item.
Counselors, Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Passes.
Excellent. Thank you.
And thank you to all the applicants.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay, at this point, I would entertain a motion to refer Town Council orders twenty twenty-one dash zero eight four through twenty twenty-one dash one one nine. Town Council orders twenty twenty-one dash one two one through two thousand twenty-one dash one two nine, as written. The individual public hearings should be held on each order on April first, two thousand twenty-one.
I move second.
Is there any discussion? You guys, any of these items? And then we move to vote. Town Clerk, Dan Quirk.
Counselors, Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Dagwone. Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Excellent. I believe that completes the orders of the day.
I just gotta say, it's a good thing we're not in the old days, Mr. President. The, the newer councils won't remember. We used to read those in individually. So we'd have one o'clock in the morning staring us in the face right now.
It was painful.
I really appreciate the consent agenda. Thank you.
You're welcome. And honestly, if you didn't just say that now, we would have gotten over by eleven o'clock. Council Rap Crisetti.
Well, I, are we gonna hear from, uh, Director?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you should have, you did stay with us this whole time.
Oh, I thought you were gonna give me the night off.
I was, you know, I, uh, you know. I apologize.
Thank you, um, President Levesque. Uh, good evening, counselors. I do have a very brief presentation. I know it's late hour. Um, but I would just like to quickly go over with the council, the contents of your capital planning document. Um, so that you'll understand the process that we go through in evaluating and putting together. For you. Um, our charter requires us to submit a five-year capital plan every year. Um, we need to submit it thirty days before we submit the operating budget and you must act on it by the may. Town manager is required to put together or assemble a task force to review the project. And, um, the, any project less than fifty thousand dollars is part of our operating budget. Capital plan includes projects two hundred and fifty dollars or more, they can be dealt. Um, significant components of the capital plan, why do we do a capital plan? Um, these are large expenditures that require much more scrutiny than the operating budget. They could have impact on operating budget for future. Um, these are very important decisions that don't repeat themselves from year to year, consequences of making error um, on our community and they do, um, result in large fluctuations in budget. We don't want to bind these. Many of these items are financed with bond issues, as you know, that blocks future operating budget for up. Binding future governing boards to making appropriations from reducing our budget. And ultimately, it does help our community establish priorities, uh, aligns this with other plans such as your strategic. Projects submitted this year total over almost four hundred and seventy-five million dollars. E, e, there's been a lot of talk lately about the comprehensive wastewater management plan and the cost of that. As you see, we have significant house program. Um, the process that we do to review these projects, we, this task force that is assembled by the town manager, evaluate all of, most of the projects that are submitted for first year in funding for three year twenty-two. Um, through a, uh, meeting that we have made up of all department heads, um, a CFAC member. And we review these projects, we rate them according to four criteria, really trying to identify those projects that are imperative. And then after we run the projects through that scoring process, we run them through a second scoring process. This, this process is described in more detail in part two of your capital planning document. And we rate each project scored in round one against these ten criteria, which are really aligned. Most of them are way. And then we rank them on the average score uh, from round one and round two scoring. And that ranking is presented in your document. Fifteen. You'll see that many of those are the ones that we scored correct. Um, we also go through in part three of the document provides summary of the status of all existing appropriations that are outstanding that we're currently working on. We have a hundred and sixty active appropriations working through. We have identified one with about two hundred and three. Aiding that both using or opposing to use for Barstool High School school, end later replaced project. And we have identified one other project that we will need to bring forward to be off. As for project fiscal year sixteen program, if unable to complete date, so, that's. So. Um, this, part four of your document provides you an illustrative example of what a five-year capital look like. Of the assumptions that we use for putting this together are provided in this section of the document. Use our capital trust fund mainly as funding source for our program. With the existing resources that we have and following those assumptions laid out in this document, we believe we can provide improvement for the general fund. Years enterprise funds largely depend on the amount of grading fees put in place. Comprehensive management plan, missions of a hundred and forty-five million can be, if the assumptions hold true that are laid out part four of the include a seventeen thousand dollar sewer assessment on with it. Finally, the part five of the proposed, uh, of the budget book provides you a summary of the details actually of the proposed capital plan. We are bringing forward forty-five projects for your consideration totaling fifty-three million dollars. Half of this program is the airport enterprise fund. Um, and, and we believe that all of that uh, will be ultimately funded with grant, either Federal Aviation Administration grants, partner station grants, and heirs. Um, so any of the reserves that we use on the airports program will replenish, grant reimbursed borrowing off quarter program. We will ultimately be able to send, um, if those, um, end up covering up. So altogether, we're using, using about nine million dollars of reserves between all the enterprise funds, the general fund. We're receiving four, about forty-four million dollars of new borrowing off stations, about two hundred and three this appropriate to this program. And also for future consideration, once we have more clarity as to where we are going with a sewer assessment and a general fund contribution, we have thirty million dollars comprehensive wastewater management planning project that we would like to bring forward later in the year out of normal process for your consideration. Once we have a bit more clarity to reassess form that. We also plan on bringing forward a appropriation for a solution for permitting and implementing a freshwater ponds program. Study is currently being undertaken. Hundred and fifty thousand test years. Not based on that study. We're waiting for final completion of that study, getting more realistic in forward that item out of like includes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
No, thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. Any questions? Councilman.
Sorry, quick one. Um, thank you very much, Director Mill. Appreciate all your professionalism. Page fourteen, there's, uh, lines that were in yellow. I don't see a key. Does that mean those are the ones that, the, uh, projects that were selected?
Yes, the highlighted projects were, are included in the proposal.
Any other questions? I just have to ask some advice here. Do we need to take a vote to close that out or is, is where we moved the second reading? There's nothing to vote on, correct?
Correct.
Other than the fact that there's no more.
Nothing to vote on.
I can adjutant a motion to adjutant.
The moves.
Second.
Very good. So here we are.
All right, I'm ready.
Councilman Quirk.
Counselors, Mary.
Yes.
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 Donacy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Axelus.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Column.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rap Crisetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Very good. Thank you, everybody for being with us. Yeah, Kate, 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 Conley, Kate, Aldenato, everybody else who, who stuck around, obviously, the turning over. Thank you for being with us. We got a lot of good work done, uh, conversations. Council Hebert, last word.
Good night. Blessings. Uh, I was, I was waving goodbye. I wasn't asking a question.
All right. Well, good night to everyone.
Thank you very much.